Good thanks, how are you?
All right.
Hi, how are you, Robert?
Uh, so I have, uh, Julian David, Republic for the TV, so I'll...
Not a problem. Not a problem.
You're down here too?
No, I'm up top. I'm just slumming down here. No, I'm up top, I'm slumming down here with you minions.
I know, you want my seat?
No, you want my chair, you can go up there. Come on up. You know, I come into this, I come into these meetings every, every six months, just hoping I don't screw it up, you know, really. Well, I think this one. That one's kinda there, we make sure nobody, uh, should be careful, cause it is live.
There's nothing, this is, you know, this is, you know, I know.
Alright, we have a quorum, if you could, uh, settle down in your seats, please. While I have your attention, uh, if you have a cellphone on, please put it and vibrate or silence it, so you don't disturb the meeting tonight. Thank you. Alright, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town meeting for April 30th, 2018. First of all, thank you all for coming tonight. It is always gratifying when we don't have to wait for a quorum or make announcements asking the people to commit from at home. And the good news to you that would like to have stayed at home and watched this on TV, we're gonna have that presentation for you right up here on the big screen, you'll get to see what you would've had been able to see if you'd stayed home, and you'll be able to vote if you're here, so, it's a wonderful thing. The following non-resident town officials and department heads have asked to be admitted to the town meeting and be allowed to respond to questions and speak on issues that are before the town meeting this evening. There is no objection, they may be seated. Town administrator, and I'd like to introduce the new town administrator, Rob Dolan, who's here this evening. The, uh, former mayor, Melrose. I have already had the occasion to work with Rob on, been in his office on several occasions, and I can tell you that we are gonna be extremely well-served by Rob Dolan, he is, uh, a very, has a very good grasp on what goes on in these communities, uh, municipal law, and will serve us extremely well, so I'm proud to introduce him. I'd like to introduce assistant to the administration, Robert Curtin, town councilor, Tom Mullen, who is seated with the selectmen, town accountant Julie McCarthy, who is, uh, seated out in the crowd. Town clerk Trudy Reed, who's seated next to me on the stage, superintendent of schools, Mrs. Jane Trembley, who is with the school committee, department of public works director, John Tomas, uh, who's seated in the box, Linda Nakara, the executive director of the senior center, who is seated with the council on aging, and library director, Holly Mercer, who is seated with the board of library trustees. So if there's no objection... I'm sorry, I missed it on my check, and also Emily Catamorton, the town conservation administrator, so, sorry. Without objection, they may be admitted and seated. We also have a number of non-voters have asked to be allowed admittance to the meeting. Mark O'Neil from Peabody Mast, Lindsay Ryan, a reporter with Linfield Weekly, Pat Kelly, the librarian at Reading, Pauline Silva, library in Peabody, Mark Tetro, the fire chief in Linfield, I might add, Christina Sullivan, the town treasurer, I missed her as well, Sophia Nagy, community service, Justine Velazquez, it looks like, volunteer, Zaynai Undai, volunteer, Donnie Lyons, director of the golf course, Phil Gogan of Ipswich Mash, Kristen McCray, Linfield Board of Health, and Chris Roberson from Longview Field Advocate. In addition to them... The following non-voters have been asked to be admitted to the meeting, they are owners of the property at Sagamaw, and members of the management team and support staff for the Fairways Edge at Sagamaw Resort, or Sagamaw Project, I'm sorry, it's not a resort yet, but it will be. As I've done in the past, I'm going to break this into two votes. One, to ask if they may be admitted, and secondly, there are... Or worse than that, I'm getting blamed now. I'm good. As I was saying, the, uh, following non-voters have asked to be admitted to the town meeting, they are the owners of the property at Sagamaw, members of the management team and support staff for the Fairways Edge at Sagamaw Project. As I've done in the past, I'm gonna split this into two votes. The first is to see if they may be admitted to the meeting, and then a small number of them have been asked, have asked to be allowed to speak or respond to questions, for the most part, um, if there are some from the, from the crowd, so, Richard Luff, Sagamaw Golf Club, Tyler Sanborn, Sagamaw Golf Club, Ronald Bonvie, the developer, Bill Bergeron, traffic engineer, Mark Forgier, financial consultant, Peter O'Gran, the president of Hayes Engineering, Bernie Starr from Northrop Realtors, Richard Chese from Northrop Realtors, Richard Carlson from Carlson Communications, Jesse Shomer, who's an attorney with Regnanti, and Michael Suter, who's a Bellingham Selectman. Is there an objection to allowing them into the meeting? Hearing none, we'll proceed to allowing to speak. The following members of that group have asked to be allowed to speak regarding the project and to answer questions from the meeting. Richard Luff, Sagamaw Golf Club, Ronald Bonvie, the developer, Bill Bergeron, the traffic engineer, Mark Forgier, the financial consultant, and Peter O'Gran, the president of Hayes Engineering. Is there an objection, objection to them being allowed to speak? Uh, and in addition to that, the, uh, following non-voter, Angus McDonald, has been allowed, uh, has been, has asked to be allowed to attend the meeting, he will not be speaking, he is the, uh, builder for Article 23, uh, the final article on the warrant tonight. Is there an objection to him attending the meeting? Hearing none, we'll move on. If you'd all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. To the constable of the town of Linfield and the county of Essex greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in the elections and in town affairs to meet in the middle school auditorium and in the gymnasium if necessary on Monday, April 30th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. If there's no objection, I'm gonna waive the reading of the entire warrant, save time, but I do have the return of service from Palminsky Constable, uh, in my hand, so it's, uh, been served. Any questions? No objection, we'll move on. We, we have a, um, busy town meeting tonight, ladies and gentlemen, but I want, for anyone that's new here, I wanna just make sure that you understand that this is without a doubt the purest form of democracy we have in America today. We only have a couple of rules, well, we have a lot of rules, but I'll help you with those as we go along. But, the real rules for people that wanna speak or be involved in town meetings is very simple. Please wait for the microphone to speak. Somebody will bring a microphone to you, or you can come down to the front and present from the microphone down front. When you speak, please give your name and address prior to speaking. You're allowed ten minutes, by the rules of the meeting. That, that time allotment may be extended with the permission of the meeting, you'll have to ask for an extension. The policy of our meetings has been to allow PowerPoint presentations as part of a presentation, there will be one of those tonight. And that anyone in this room can amend a motion by changing the wording or changing the dollar amount, you just simply move to make that motion. If you're new to the meeting and you wanna try to make an amendment or try to amend a motion, put your hand up when you're recognized, uh, I'll try to help you through that if that's a problem. I would just say this, if you're gonna make an amendment, or you're gonna make a motion here tonight in the floor, the motion needs to be made before you make your argument. Do not stand up, make your argument, and then try to make the motion. The format is not correct, it would not be allowed. Since our last town meeting, we've done a couple of things to try to upgrade, one of them is the overhead projector, so the people up in the back can see what's going on in the meeting, and, uh, we expected an overflow to the cafeteria, so we wanted to make sure that they could see what's going on in the meeting. Eric Hamlin from the media center has done a great job putting this together, and it, um, we're trying to make this town meeting, bring it up a little speed into the 2000s, uh, to, to, with current technology, so, uh, I'm thankful to Eric and his crew, and there's a couple of contractors in here doing some work tonight, thank you to all of them. There is a town meeting study committee that's studying town meeting, and they've got a lot of, uh, great suggestions, they're gonna be back to us in October with some of those recommendations, and one of them is gonna be electronic voting. One of, one of their considerations already has been electronic voting, and they voted to support it based on the last meeting. Uh, there was a lot of positive response, and so again, tonight, we have another vendor that's in, giving us a trial run of their system. Uh, I've seen the system work, it seems to work very well, and, um, so this is our second opportunity to experiment with that. A couple of things you should know. You issued a clicker when you checked in tonight, the white clicker, do not lose it. But it's simple enough that even I've figured it out. We're gonna use one for yes tonight, we're gonna use two for no, that's the only choices you have. So when I call for the vote, if you wanna vote yes, you hit one, if you wanna vote no, you vote hit two. You'll have thirty seconds to vote tonight, and, uh, when you do that, whatever vote is registered last is the vote that counts. So if you hit one, you'll see a thing on your screen, it pops up and shows a one, and it'll show, I think, received, and then it shows yes, you'll know your vote was counted, the light will go on, you'll know your vote was counted. If you change your mind before the thirty seconds is up, you can hit two, it'll change the vote to two, as long as it's in before the thirty seconds is up. So, though, it's really pretty simple, and, uh, we've got a couple of routine articles at the front of the warrant on pile drivers and field drivers and wood measurers and all sorts of, uh, procedural stuff, and, uh, did I get that right, Tom? And, um, we'll, we'll vote on those, and if anyone has any questions after we vote on those, we'll answer your questions. I will say this, as I said at the last meeting. These clickers will not open your garage door, they won't run your TV for you, they aren't gonna help you see the Bruins here tonight, you can keep pushing 576 and the Bruins will never appear on that screen. I'm well aware that there's a playoff game tonight. So it will do you no good to take 'em home, and at the end of the night, there will be people standing at the exits with big bins, asking you to toss 'em in the bin. So everyone gets checked in tonight, the device gets scanned in to you, to your name. We do not have the, there's no interface to interface how this number got read and what you voted. We aren't tracking votes here, there's, there's nothing to do with it, but the minute you throw it in the bin, that bin's gonna go get scanned back out, and so that we can find out, and the reason for the scanning is just to know who has each device, so that they can be scanned back out, and if we're missing a couple, we can call them, so... If you try to steal the device from us, so that you can come back to the next meeting, it won't work at the next meeting, but we're gonna hunt you down, so... When it is time to vote, I will announce that it's time to vote, that you will have thirty seconds to vote, that you should press one for yes, two for no, and I will open polling, at that point, you'll see a green light go on up here, uh, you'll see, uh, the gentleman over at my left watching the, the screens, they'll time it down to thirty seconds, and then they will shut it off, it's all automated. Alright. Mr. Dalton.
Mr. Moderator, I move that if necessary, this annual town meeting be adjourned to Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the middle school auditorium, gymnasium, and cafeteria, if need be, should the business of the meeting not be completed.
It's been moved and seconded that if necessary, the town meeting be adjourned to Thursday, May 3rd, 2018, at 7:00 PM, in the middle school auditorium, gymnasium, and cafeteria, if need be, should the business of the meeting not be completed. Any discussion on the article? All those in favor, uh, oh, you know what, all those, we're gonna open up polling. Almost did this the old-fashioned way, I'm sorry. So, open up polling, and, uh, you have three seconds to vote, one for yes, two for no. So, I've been asked to remind, let me give you the vote announcement, there's 260 yes, six no. One minute, Mrs. Campbell, please. So, if, if your clicker was not working, there's a power button on the lower right corner that will, that you may have hit that would've turned it off, so you just need to make sure that the screen comes up. Mrs. Campbell.
I was going to point out that we weren't getting anything on the line. And you just explained it, we have to push the power button.
The power button was turned on, should've, power button should've been turned on when you checked in, but somehow may have been checked off, so I'm sorry. Do you want me to recast that vote, so you can vote, Mrs. Campbell, or do you...
I, I would appreciate it after someone turns on the power button.
Alright, so let's make sure everybody's working here, we're gonna put this back to a vote yet, so all those in favor of the preliminary motion, signify by voting one, those opposed, no, push two, voting is open. Yes, 251, no, 10. The motion carries, we'll proceed to Article 1. To act on reports of town officers and special committees as published. Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that to accept the reports of town officers and special committees as published.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the reports of town officers and special committees as published. Is there any discussion? I see a hand up there, are you... You don't wanna talk? There are, no discussion, we'll move to a vote. So when I open the polling, press one to vote yes, press two to vote no, the polling is now open. Yes votes, 259, no votes, eight. The motion carries Article 2, to choose all town officers not required to be chosen by ballot. Three field drivers, one pound keeper, three wood measurers. Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to choose all town officers not required to be chosen by ballot as follows. Robert McKendrick, John Procurate, and Betty Adelson as field drivers, uh, David Crockett as pound keeper, and Kenneth Burnham and Robert McKendrick as wood measurers.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to choose all town officers not required to be chosen by ballot as follows. Robert McKendrick, John Procurate, and Betty Adelson as field drivers, David Crockett as pound keeper, and Kenneth Burnham and Robert McKendrick as wood measurers. Is there any further discussion on this article? Hearing none, we'll proceed... Yes, sir. Mr. Prospero.
Bob Prospero, sixth chair in Cross Linfield. I would just like to know what a wood measurer is, I have no idea, this is just a point of information, and why do we need three?
If you buy a cord of wood, and you don't think you got a cord, you call the wood measurer. They come measure it for you to make sure you got your cord. You can try to challenge me, Mr. Prospero, but I got an answer for everything, okay? Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. Those in favor, press one, those opposed, press two, you have thirty seconds to vote, it's now open. Yes, 250, no, 22. The yes have it, motion carries Article 3. To see if the town will vote to fix the compensation of each of the elective offices of the town as required by general laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended. Mr. Dalton.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the compensation of each of the elective offices of the town as required by general laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended as follows. Board of Selectmen, chairman, $850, and member, $700. Board of Assessors, chairman, $4,100, and member, $3,550.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to fix the compensation of each of the elective offices of the town as required by general laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended as follows. Board of Selectmen, chairman, 850, and member, 700. Board of Assessors, chairman, 4100, and member, 3,550. Is there any further discussion on this article? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Those in favor, press one, those opposed, press two, the polling is now open. The polling is closed, 259 yes, 22 no, the yes have it, the motion carries. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, sums of money to supplement certain accounts in the current 2018 fiscal year where balances are below projected expenditures for various reasons, or to take any action, other action, in connection there with, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate $56,049.24 from free cash and transfer from existing fiscal year 2018 appropriation accounts, the sums listed on page two of the handout booklet, under the heading Article 4, to the accounts listed in said handout in order to balance the FY18 budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to vote to appropriate $56,049.24 from free cash and transfer from existing fiscal year 2018 appropriation accounts, the sums listed on page two of the handout booklet, under the heading Article 4, to the accounts listed in said handout in order to balance the fiscal year 18 budget. Is there any, let me go to the recommendations first, Board of Selectmen's recommendation?
What, the board recommends Article 4?
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 4.
Is there any further discussion on this article? Yes, sir, up in the back? Is there a microphone right up in the back? Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Bridget Piner, 3 Rourke Lane. Uh, question about snow and ice removal, $188,000. Do these people... Do these people have GPSs? Is there some way to track to make sure they're doing what they're doing? Because we all know that fraud is very rampant in the city of Boston in this matter. And I'd just like to know that Lynnfield's getting a dollar's worth of plowing for a dollar spent.
Mr. Tomas, if somebody could bring a microphone over to Mr. Tomas. We have another mic runner up there? So, the people that are in the center hallway, please come in and get a seat. You can't stand in the center hallway. We aren't counting votes. Move in.
The contractors do not have GPS in their vehicles. The town vehicles don't either. Whether myself and Mark Rogers, my assistant, we're out during every snowstorm checking on things. Each driver is assigned an area of town, street of town, so we're pretty much aware if we think they're not doing what they should be doing, when they should be doing it.
Again, the people in the center aisle, please move into the meeting. Find a seat somewhere. Yeah, yeah. Come on in. There any further questions on Article 4? Up down the, down the front here? Mr. Bjorkman? Microphone down here, please. Where are my mic runners? Down here, right down the front.
David Bjorkman, 27 Homestead Road. I would recommend that the town reprimand JRM for coming up with $27,000-plus dollars arriving late. Sorry. I'll come back.
May have lost this. I have no idea what we were talking about there. Wrong, it's on the wrong article. Any other discussion on Article 4? Yes, ma'am, done. Front, microphone down, please.
Hi, I'm Judy Burson, and I live in Harvey Park. And several times I've had to call Town Hall to ask to get Harvey Park plowed. They go to Harvey Park, but there are other houses on Harvey Park that are inhabited. And we're plowed in or not plowed at all. And my husband had to physically go out and shovel the whole damn street on four separate occasions. In fact, I was so upset, I think I called up Trudy and asked her to send him a paycheck. And I don't think I should have to be calling up to get my street plowed or anything else.
Any further discussion on Article 4? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of Article 4, push one. Those opposed, push two. The polling is now open. Polling has closed. Yes votes, 266, no votes, 27. The yes votes have it. The motion carries. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or appropriate by transfer from available funds sums of money to pay overdue bills of a prior fiscal year, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $36,972.91 from free cash for the payment of overdue bills as listed on Page 3 of the handout booklet under the heading Article 5. Second?
It's been moved in second that the town vote to appropriate $36,972.91 from free cash for the payment of overdue bills as listed on Page 3 of the handout booklet under the heading Article 5. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend the adoption of Article 5.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 5.
Further discussion? Mr. Bjorkman? You want to be heard? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Before we do, I will mention that this requires a nine tenths vote. Sorry? Four fifths. So, for those that might be inclined to vote no, just for the fun of it, please don't vote your conscience, but it requires a four fifths vote. All those in favor of Article 5, when the polling is open, push one. Those opposed, push two. Polling is now open. 278, yes, 19, no. The four fifths number would have been 237. 278 far exceeds it. We have four fifths. The motion carries. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or appropriate by transfer from available funds sums of money for the purpose of paying outstanding overtime differential under the dispatcher's contract, Article 14, for contracts in fiscal year 14, fiscal year 15, fiscal year 16, and fiscal year 17, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate by transfer from free cash $2,486.9 for the purpose of paying outstanding overtime differential per the dispatcher's contract, Article 14, for contracts in fiscal years 14, 15, 16, and 17.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second that the town vote to raise an appropriate by transfer from free cash $2,486.9 for the purpose of paying outstanding overtime differential per the dispatcher's contract, Article 14, for contracts in fiscal year 14, 15, 16, and 17. Recommendation of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend the adoption of Article 6.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 6.
Is there any further discussion on this article?
Wayne Perry, 27 Charing Cross, Lynnfield. I rise to a point of information. Last fall, we could see the vote counts being displayed when you took them. Could you change that?
We tried to. The systems between the PowerPoint system that we have and the computers that they have, they will not interface. So, we would like to have done that. We had been told we would be doing that, but when they tried to hook it up, and they've been here most of the day today, it hasn't been, they haven't been able to get it working. So, it's okay.
I'll dock them 50 bucks and make sure they do it next time.
We, yeah, we do, we do it have it, we do it have it up on this screen. I can see it here, but we will, if we do this in the future, we move to that, we will definitely have it on the screen. It was much more fun last year when it was appearing up there and everyone got to see what was going on, so. And coming to Town Meeting is all about having fun, isn't it? Article 6, any further discussion on Article 6? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. So, when I open the polling, all those in favor, push one. Those opposed, push two. The polling is now open. Well, not yet. Don't push yet. The polling is now open on Article 6. Yeah, they're not getting, we're having problems with this clock. We will revote. Please stand by. Alright, sorry for that. Folks, if you're moving into the cafeteria, the cafeteria is not currently active for polling, I don't think. We're not gonna open the cafeteria until all the seats in this room have been filled. So, there's plenty of empty seats up in the back, but we're not, I do not believe we're currently counting in the cafeteria. Plenty of seats down in front. Okay, on Article 6. Again, this is on outstanding overtime differential for the dispatcher's overtime. If you're in favor of this article, press one. Those opposed, press two. The polling is now open. There you go. Yes votes, 264, no votes, 26. Article 6 carries. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or appropriate by transfer from available funds or otherwise, a sum of money for the necessary town charges and expenses, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds, the sum of $54,778,363 for the necessary town charges and expenses as presented by the Board of Selectmen, as shown in the Finance Committee report, beginning on Page 8 thereof. Second?
It's been moved in second that the town vote to raise an appropriate and transfer from available funds, the sum of $54,778, I'm sorry, $54,778,363 for the necessary town charges and expenses, as presented by the Board of Selectmen and is shown in the Finance Committee report, beginning on Page 8 thereof. So, as we've done traditionally here in Town Meeting, we're gonna work through the handbook or the warrant that's got the budget in it. I'm gonna call out, I've broken it into line item numbers. If you would like to be heard on a particular line item or on a particular group of line items, feel free to call Mr. Moderator or speak out, put your hand up, get my attention. Then we will hold, we'll allow, facilitate the discussion on that group of articles at that time, and then we'll move on to the next one once the discussion is complete. So, if you have anything to say about these particular articles, as I call out the line numbers, please let us know. General Government, line items 1 through 8C. Mrs. Campbell? Is there a microphone here, please? He's coming.
I'm looking at line 5, the pay rate increase, which is 85% more than it was. And the detail on the pacing page says that this is for awarding departmental positions with a raise. So, I would like to know what departmental positions we're talking about? And is there any ceiling to the amount of the increase in the raises that you will be talking about? I'm very concerned with the entire budget, with how many increases are very large, anywhere from 4 to 13%, as I recall. So, would somebody explain to us what positions will be awarded higher compensation between now and the next Town Meeting?
And if you would just identify yourself and address, please?
I'm sorry. Patricia Campbell, 7 Patrice Lane.
Wants to be heard in this Town Front. Mr. Dalton?
Yes, thank you. This line item has been raised by $10,000. The line item is used for basically three things. One is mid-year increases deemed appropriate. A second is the department head goal stipends. Each department head is asked to give me a list of goals. They're due on May 1st. There are stipends directly related to meeting those goals in a small amount put aside in case there are any miscalculations or errors.
Mrs. Campbell?
My question was very specific. Which department heads? And are there any ceiling as to the amount, the percentage amount of the increase that these people will be awarded compensation between now and, and our next Town Meeting?
The answer to your first question, ma'am, is that it's non-contracted department heads. There are certain department heads that have contracts, i.e. the police chief, the fire chief, the finance, assistant finance director. The, in terms of the ceiling or cap, there is no cap.
So, the specific department heads that haven't, that aren't going to be, that aren't compensated in this warrant? Which department heads?
All department heads that are not under contract.
And those would be?
The library director, the, the, Mr. Curtin, anyone out, let's just, it's easy to say who's in a contract. The myself, the police chief, the fire chief, the finance, assistant finance director, and that's about it. And that's it. Everyone, other, every department except for those individuals.
Thank you, because I want people to be aware that there are contracts which are finalized between the meetings.
Further discussion on line items 1 through 8C? Mr. Prosperi?
Bob Prosperi, 6 Charing Cross. I'm wondering if I can talk about Page 6. I, I might be out of order, but I don't think so. But you skipped over Status of Town Funds?
I will allow you to speak on Page 6, Mr. Prosperi. Go back, that's fine.
Thank you very much. This is just to educate me, because I am a physical conservative. Free cash, we had 2.3 million. We, we spent... We spent 1.9, so it looks like we only have, we went from $2.3 million in reserves to $362,000 in reserves. I'd just like to know what that means as an education, please.
Mr. Dalton?
The town has many, several types of reserves. One obviously is the stabilization fund, the capital stabilization fund. Free cash consists of the amount of money over and above that anticipated after certifying our tax return. Department of Revenue then sends us the equivalent of our tax return, as you would get in your own home. This, these dollars should be used for one-time operating expenses, which is what this community does, and in the FY '19 budget, which is very friskly prudent, does not use any one-time re... does not use any one-time revenues to, for ongoing operating expenses. So this money is dedicated to, in this town and others, for specific items like capital that are one-time in nature and should oftentimes not be returned the following year.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Prospery? Okay. Going back to line items 1 through 8C. Any further discussion on those line items? Hearing none, we'll move to line items 9 through 11. Town accountant, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to the town council, line items 12 through 14. Seeing none, finance and operations, line items 15 through 28. Moving on to the Board of Assessors, line items 29 through 33. Next group is 34 through 40, the planning board, the Board of Appeals, the Conservation Commission. Yes, ma'am?
Kathy Randall, 55 Carter Road. I noticed that the reclassification of the position to planner is fine, but they don't have any clerical salary in there. And also, is the planner going to have a degree in planning? This is just informational purposes, but I'm really concerned there's no clerical...
Which line item we talked about, Mrs. Randall?
Pardon me?
Which line item we talked about?
Planner salary, 34.
Thank you. Mr. Dolan?
I would like to defer the chairman of the planning board.
Good evening. I'm Brian Charville, chairman of the planning board. To answer Mrs. Randall's question, by way of background, Mrs. Randall was the assistant for the planning board for many, many years. And we thank her for her service. She retired just last August after many years of service to us. It is the planning board's intention that if this budget line item would be approved, that the line item would go from the upper 40s per year in staffing to $65,000 maximum for the position. And that would enable us, hopefully, as a town, to hire a town planner rather than the position as it's been staffed previously, which is as a planning and land use assistant, which is the position Mrs. Randall held. It is the board's intent that the planner would have clerical responsibilities and not just true planning-related ones. And the planning board has worked on a job description for a town planner in anticipation of town meeting approving the budget. And our base minimum job qualifications include a bachelor's degree, although the preferred training will include, or education, rather, will include a master's degree.
Did that answer your question, Mrs. Randall? Nope. Microphone up the back, please, again.
What would the master's degree be in? Would it be in planning?
We haven't gotten that far, but that I know is the board's intent based on our discussions as recently as last Wednesday.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on line items 34 through 40? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next group, line items 41 through 47, the Finance Committee. I'm sorry. Mrs. Campbell, yes, ma'am. Identify yourself again.
Patricia Campbell, 7 Patrice Lane, also on 34. Let it be very clear to the town that they've already hired this person. Really, without your permission. Rob says no.
Mr. Dolan?
We have not, we have not hired that position.
You have not hired that position?
No, we have not.
So you've hired the person as, in Mrs. Randall's position? But she's set up to be the town planner, isn't that correct?
I'm Mrs. Campbell, I'm Bob Curtin. No, that's not correct. We have someone in here working temporarily in the clerical position. So that person, I assume, would be eligible to apply for this position, but she has not been hired with the expectation that she would roll right into that position. She's working 15 hours a week for us right now.
But she had experience as a town planner in Wenham? Isn't that correct?
You're thinking of the conservation administrator. She was hired, this, our conservation administrator does have planning experience in Wenham, but she was hired to replace Betty Adelson, not Kathy Randall.
Okay, so this position is dependent upon our approval of a $65,000 starting salary? Thank you.
Correct. Any further discussion on line items 34 through 40? Hearing none, we'll move on. Line items 41 through 47, the Personnel Board and the Finance Committee. No discussion, we'll go to the next page. Line items 48 through 60, Police and Fire. Seeing no discussion. Line 61 to 63, Division of Zoning and Inspection. Seeing none. Line items 64 through 67, Civil Offense and the Dog Officer. No discussion, we'll move on to the next page, page 14. Line items 68 through 89, Public Works. No discussion, we'll move on to the next page, page 16. Human Services, line items 90 through 96. Do I hear somebody wants to speak?
Kathy Randall, 55 Carter Road. On the salaries, 90 and the 91 expenses. The salaries are for the Board of Health Director, Clerical Support and Town Physician. Okay, then you have expenses, nurses' services, office supplies, advertising, veterinary services, biological testing, and contractual support. Contractual support is to pay a gentleman who works for Middleton as the Board of Health Director. He reviews the plans. I believe he's still paid $40 an hour. Leo Cormier goes out and does the visits for the septic system at $40 an hour. And there are two people that now handle the restaurant inspections. And I see that there's another, almost $8,000 that applies to expenses. It really bothers me that we're paying outside people to do work that would be under the Board of Health as part of that position. And this has been going on for quite some time. And I don't feel that it's right that we pay out this way. If the town wants to do it this way, why don't we separate the septic and the health department? But to pay it this way is not fair to the town to know how much is being paid out to individuals.
Dr. Piner, would you like to be heard on this? Microphone right behind you.
Options are to pay out eight grand or hire another sanitarian for $64,000. You know, we have X amount of people and X plus X amount of work to get done. You know, since Kristin's been here, we have uncovered disaster under disaster with our old sanitarian, where four bedrooms became five bedrooms, five bedrooms became four bedrooms, septic plans were, pardon my French, half-assed. And she has done a spectacularly good job. And if she has to pay Leo Cormier once in a while to go out and run a restaurant, fine. Now also remember when she took over, there was no shopping mall up there at the Colonial. I forget how many restaurants we have up there now. So if you want the work done, you've got to pay the people. And you can either subcontract a little bit, or you can hire a second sanitarian, your call. But I think I know which costs a lot less money.
Stay right up there with the microphone. Yep, go back to Mrs. Randall, thank you.
To differ on a couple of items. Mr. Cormier's there almost every day, as long as I work there. Plans always go out to Derek. They do not, are not done in the office. And working there and seeing it, yet Kristin has done a great job. We just don't see her. We don't see her do the work. She's not in the office. And that's a big problem for a lot of residents. And I feel now that I don't work there, I can speak up about it. It's become a joke to a lot of people that work there, that she just shows up when she wants. And we don't get the work in a timely manner from her department.
Basically, if you'd like to discuss this afterwards about certain personal agendas, I'd be happy to. I don't think it belongs in this forum. But basically, what we're hearing is a lot of BS. Kristin does most of the plans. The plans are presented to our board. Kristin has never hung up signs in the office that are demeaning and telling people to call me directly with problems, like somebody in this room has. So I think, basically, you should just disregard everything this woman has to say. Thank you.
Right. I'd like to keep it respectful. We're all citizens here. We're all trying to work in the best interest of the town, Linfield. And so I think the name-calling and thing-appointing from a professional perspective is fine, but when you make accusations or personal agendas, you're out of line. Please don't do it again. I'll ask to have you removed from the meeting, so it's that simple. Moving on, line items 97 through 103. Culture and Recreation, Recreation Commission, Historical Commission, Memorial Day. Any further discussion on those line items? Hearing none, proceed to page 18, the Education Budget. Line items 104, 104A and 105. Any discussion? Mrs. Campbell?
Patricia Campbell, 7 Patrice Lane. I want everyone to notice that you do not have much detail on the largest part of our budget. All you get is page 18. Yes, it's true that the School Committee has authority by the Education Act of 1993 over the line items. But we have the right to determine the bottom line. Presently, negotiations are held before our meeting, and in April. So we are locked in to whatever they negotiate. Therefore, that takes our right to affect the bottom line away, doesn't it? Here's some of the problems that I see and that I've been pointing out year after year. I have the line item budget, and all of you can get it from the School Department. I'm only going to give a few examples in the middle school salaries. The first one is speech therapist. It went in fiscal year 16 from 52, 970, I'm having trouble seeing it all, to this year, it's projected at a 6.8% increase in salary to $68,367. And the other one that I would point out, just in as an example, and I knew exactly where to look, because for the last several years, such huge increases for individuals have been signed off on by the School Committee. This one is media specialist salary. In fiscal 16, it was 58,346, and it's gone up to $87,000. This year, it only logs a 2.5 only increase. I asked at the selectmen's meeting, when the School Committee presented their budget, is the School Committee still giving increases of 5%, 7%, 12%? And Mrs. Tremblay answered, yes. And I asked why. And I was said, because it's, she said, because it's in their contract. Well, who signs off on the contracts? That's all I have to say. But I think you should, you should all be looking, getting a line item budget. If it's not supplied by this town and by our Finance Committee, you should all be taking a look. You would find it quite educational.
Want to be heard, Mrs. Tremblay, Schools? Nope?
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Jane Tremblay, Superintendent of Schools. Yes, we did discuss that at the selectmen's, at the selectmen's meeting. And the reason for the large jump is for one or two reasons. One is that a person who was making a lesser salary was replaced by somebody making a higher salary, or the person in the position has moved steps in lanes, meaning that they may have gotten a greater degree in the course of the year.
Up in the back. Please wait for the microphone, they're coming up to you. Yep.
Michael Walsh, 7 Townsend Road. Forgive me, Mr. Moderator, I wanted to ask the superintendent, in her budget presentation, she'd indicated that because of their short crunch that we're up against, that there were some positions that were being cut, specifically Mrs. Budd's position doing the football concussion protocol. And I was curious if the, either we should be restoring that position or if the School Committee was going to have an approach to address that.
Mrs. Tremblay?
Mr. Walsh, can I get clarification on what you're asking?
My apologies. You had indicated in your departmental request that you were, it had come in a little high, and you had, there were some things that you, were on your wish list that you wanted that you couldn't get. And you had indicated that although you were hiring a new first-grade teacher, that you were looking at cutting some hours from, I think it was, elementary school tutors, a couple of media aid positions, part-time. And I think you had indicated that Mrs. Budd's position was, I think she's the nurse's assistant, was going to be eliminated, and that she was the one who does the school concussion protocol for the football games. And I was just curious if the School Committee had, who was going to pick up those responsibilities, specifically the concussion protocol for the football games?
So those responsibilities, some of those will be picked up by Morgan Deshaur, who works in our athletic department, and some of it will be picked up by our current nurses.
Any further discussion on line items 104, 104A and 105, the Education Budget? Seeing none, we'll move on. Page 20. Line items 106 through 112, Debt and Interest. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on. Line items 113 through 119, Employee Benefits. Down in the front here, please?
Steve Sorrentino, 3 Missouri Lane. Pensions, Town Health, Life, Disability. Who is covered? How is the pension calculated? And is the Town Health, Life and Disability paid 100% or is it contributory? And if it is contributory, to what extent, percentage-wise?
Who wants this down front? Mr. Dolan?
Can we go one question at a time? The first question is, it was the first question, who is eligible for a pension?
Pension, who's included? And how's it calculated?
The pension system is based upon a statewide system. The pension system is based upon a statewide system. Obviously, your highest three years is, points your, your 80% mark is based on your highest three years, if you, if you are working for that long. It's a combination of how many years of service and age, right? That is done by PARAC, which is the state agency. Our local pension board is the Essex County Pension System, which is a regionalized approach to pension management, which I find to be an excellent way to manage the pension system. Some people have a local pension board, but we regionalize, which I think produces a better return to fully fund our pension system by 2041. So I think that's sound. Any individual who's a full-time employee, which is 18 or 19 hours, I believe it's, I believe it's 19 hours, who's eligible for health insurance, also is included in the pension system. That also is state law, not local law.
And so it's on, you were saying it's on an actuarial basis, the pension?
Correct, yeah.
Is it underfunded or overfunded?
We are on track to meet our pension obligations before the deadline of 2041. We have seen, it's well managed by Essex County, and I think it's, it's sound. We are ahead of schedule in terms of meeting our pension obligations.
And on the line item for Town Health, my assumption is all town employees are covered? And if so, is it contributory or is it paid 100% by the town?
It is contributory. I contribute, it's a 75% from the town, 25% from the employee. Like our pension system, it's a regionalized approach through the Group Insurance Commission, which allows our risk per se to be spread across the all-state employees and other municipalities to bulk purchase for better rates. And again, I think we have seen, all communities who've been in the GIC have seen steady increases of between 3 and 5%, which is far better than other agencies, nonprofits, or private sector. They're seeing double-digit increases.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Up in the back, please. Turn right around behind you, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen Crawford, 16 Durham Drive. Can we go back to page 18 in Education for a moment? Will you indulge me?
I will, Mrs. Crawford.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Walsh brought up a good point. I just want to go back to Mrs. Tremblay and ask, is two media special, two media assistants and nurse's assistant all being cut? Is that correct?
Hi. So the personnel, the personnel positions that are being cut for next year is the nurse's aide position throughout the district. It is also the aide to the Media Center at Linfield High School. It is the guidance aide at the high school, classroom tutoring hours across the board at the elementary level and at the middle school level, and the permanent subpositions at the middle school and the high school.
So on the nursing and the Media Center aides, what is that collective salaries?
It's approximately $30,000.
And is, are those positions being moved out so that the person in the media specialist, I mean, the Media Center's salary is escalated? Is that to cover that?
No. The, the positions are being moved out simply because we needed to hit a bottom line with our budget. And so we had to make some really difficult choices this year in our budget.
So I'm just concerned because we've got the opioid, the healthy Linfield now, and Linfield, there's so many issues with young people and the opioids, and we're trying to help that. And I know the nursing staff is already stretched to their limit, to say the least. So I hate to see a, you know, $13,000 position be cut. But I think it's vital and to have those people in our schools. And I don't know if there's anywhere in the budget we could come up with that money to keep those positions and keep those people in the school. Because it's short money. I mean, I'm sorry, $50,000 for three people who've been doing these jobs, I believe, for quite a long time. We're probably getting a lot more out of them than we are the $13,000 that they're earning.
I understand.
So I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Moderator, I'm not quite sure how to do it, or where would we?
Well, you should have made it before you spoke, because I've already said that you can't speak and then make the motion.
Oh, I'm a bad listener.
So you'd be out of order to do that.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the other line item?
Francis Fleming, 272 Main Street. The combined salaries for, I'm not sure about the part-time guidance secretary, but for the nurse's aide and the media specialist aide comes to $23,000. It's $11,000 and $13,000. I guess that makes it $24,000. So that's what our salaries are there. And that means that the media specialist who has two master's degrees is going to be babysitting study halls and spending her days checking Chromebooks in and out. And it means the nurse will have to leave the school, the high school, if she has to visit any of the other, she's in charge of all the other nurses. There will be no nurse's aide. There will be no nurse at the high school. There are 504 plans that say, my child has diabetes, whatever, I am guaranteed that there is a nurse there at all times. That, and it, you also, they will not be in compliance with the Massachusetts Library Media Center, Media Specialists. You are required to have an aide for the media specialist.
Any further discussion? Gentleman in the jacket and white shirt down by the door here. Somebody run a mic over here?
Chris Lamb, 22 Westover Drive. I'd like to make a motion to put these two jobs back in the budget.
So probably worded, Mr. Lamb, your motion would be to move, a change in line item 104 by, to increase the line by what amount? So I'm being told it would be $30,000 to cover those salaries with whatever benefits there are, whatever. Yeah, roughly $30,000. So, Mr. Lamb, your motion would be to increase line item 10, well, somewhere, one of these salary line items by $30,000. Is that correct? And it's been seconded? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. What line item does that go in, Mr. Geary? Do you know? So it's the 24,0850, 140 would become 25, 24,880, 140, is that correct? Sorry, 24,850, 170. No, 850, I'm sorry, 880. I'm sorry, not working well tonight, 140. So it's been moved and seconded to amend line item 104 by adding $30,000, making the total dollar amount $24,880,140. Is there any further discussion on this line item? Mrs. Campbell.
Well, this is the inevitable result. I have no malice against these part-time employees. But would, Mr. Moderator, would you prevent the person in the back from calling out while I'm speaking? A little admonishment would be in order.
I'll run the meeting, Mrs. Campbell. Thank you very much. If I decide something needs to be admonished, I'll take care of it, okay?
Thank you.
You may proceed. I don't need any more help. Thank you.
This is the inevitable result of the huge increases that have been going on for a number of years. I specifically chose media specialist because that's one of the ones that have continued to be in every school cyclically awarded huge increases, far beyond what the people, and many of you who work, are getting in the, in private business. And I would also like to ask the question of our Selectmen and our Finance Committee, what does this do to the budget? Does this put us into an override position? I know you've tried very hard to, I know the School Committee under Jim Boudreau was asked not to have a 6% increase this year. I believe that's true. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. But I urge you not to be permissive. I've often wondered if these huge increases are a little slush fund in the budget, in the school budget, so they have extra money to work with. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion to amend line item 104? Gentleman White?
Mike Savio, 16 Edwood Ave. I'm curious if this also includes the restoration of the nurse's assistants as well. And I did not, I, that was not clear to me at this point. Does the $30,000 include that in inclusion?
The question is, is it both positions, the nurse's assistant and the media person?
Thank you.
At $30,000. Yes. Yes, it does. Does that answer your question, Mr. Savio? Thank you. Any further discussion on these, this motion to amend this line item? Mr. Priestley.
Bob Priestley, 3 Wing Road. If this amendment is, is accepted and approved on, does it guarantee that positions will be reinstated? Or will the, is the money up to the discretion of the School Department to do with as it sees fit?
Mr. Dolan.
It's under the Education Reform Act. Although money will be allocated, it's up to the School Committee, as independent fiduciary body, to decide where that money's going to be allocated.
Any further discussion on the amendment, on the motion to amend line item 104? Mrs. Crawford.
Ellen Crawford, 16 Durham Drive. Can this body ensure that that money goes to those positions? Do we have any authority as a voting?
Mr. Dolan.
No, no, they do not.
Further discussion on the motion to amend this line item? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. When I open the polling, all those in favor of the motion to amend the line item signify by hitting the 1. Those opposed, hit 2. The polling is now open. Yeses 191, nos 134. The yeses have it. The motion carries. Back to line item discussion, discussion of line items 104, 104A and 105, the Education Budget. Any further discussion? All right, we're going to proceed to page 20. Go back to line items 113 through 119, Employee Benefits. Is there any further discussion on those? Up in the back, yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Katie Shea, 7 Daventry Court. I would like to move to amend line item 119 from $200,000 to $300,000. I believe I have to give you the written request to take down the front.
I'm sorry, the line item we're getting, Mrs. Shea?
Sorry, 119.
Thank you.
Oh, he has to say that has to be seconded, though?
Is there a second on the motion? It's been moved and seconded to amend line item 119 from $200,000 to $300,000. Further discussion? Shea?
The reason why I bring this up is because on line item 119, our OPEB, what we've been putting in is $300,000 a year. And this year, it's been reduced by 33% to put in $200,000 a year. What OPEB stands for is Other Employee Pension, Other Employee Expensive Benefits. And anyways, to make a long story short, if you look at page 53, which I don't think many of us have in the room, but I have it, which is our, it's not in the books, it's our annual financial statement. And we look at our OPEB payouts. For year 2015, this is an annual OPEB cost. It was $5,891,763. If we look forward to 2017, that went up to $8,435,480, which over a two-year period was a $2.5 million increase, which is approximately 43%. If we look at our net obligation for the same time period, this is moving forward for the entire time period for our OPEB obligation to our retiring employees, it's gone up from $25,361 to $372 in 2015. And then in 2017, the obligation has jumped for our retired employees to $36,994,752. So we can see that our OPEB obligation overall, our new OPEB obligation, has increased by 46%. So it's increasing, it's not decreasing. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that if we look at our latest Standard and Poor's rating, our latest Standard and Poor's rating is from 2017. This is the most recent rating. There is not one for 2018. But there's some information I wanted to point out to people when they're looking at Linfield and our financial stability. The good news is our town is very financially stable, but these are a few things that we should all note. What has been said is that, let's see, in our opinion, Linfield's large pension and OPEB obligation without a plan in place, we think will sufficiently address the obligation as a credit weakness. Linfield's combined required pension and actual OPEB contribution of 7.9% of total government fund expenditures in fiscal 2016. It goes on to say that, due to the low funded ratio, we believe contributions will likely continue to rise over the next few years. So our credit rating bureau is looking for us to put more, which I'm not asking for more, I'm asking for us to put the same in, in order for us to help to stabilize our OPEB account. So this is why, let's see, what other highlighted note? The other thing is, let's see, we believe the town's very strong liquidity with limited capital needs provide additional rating strength. Therefore, we do not expect to change the rating over the next two years for our town. But that's why I'm asking, when we put money into our OPEB account, it's money that's put there specifically to help fund our obligations for our retired employees. And it's something that, once we put it away, we can't put it in any other accounts. And I'm just asking that the town continue to fund it at the same level. And when we can, if we can increase it, as Standard and Poor's is giving us guidelines, that would be wonderful. But I would like to ask those today to support, at least keeping it stable at $300,000 as we have done in the past years. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dolan. When I certainly appreciate any discussion on OPEB. It's not, it's not a major issue, but it is a, a major
It's not, it's not a major issue, but it is a major issue for people in my line of work, as the selectmen, FinCom, and others who work in the public, field of public administration. Obviously, any amount to OPEB is needed. I mean, you could put in $1 million, you could put in half a million dollars, you could put in $200,000. But at what cost? The concern I have, although we would like to continuously fund OPEB, and I think traditionally we have put in $200,000, and I want to applaud my predecessors for actually putting in more over the last several years that we have had in the past and have made a substantial investment. One, I'm concerned about the draining of our free cash. We're at a point where we would be at a level of free cash that I'm concerned about. Secondly, we would look to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which has had, unlike in the pension system, has not set a plan for communities to unify in a procedure of investment in OPEB. Everyone's doing something different. What are we doing? We're investing in OPEB, but we're also ensuring that we can fund all our community needs, which are, which are many. And the debate is a legitimate one, and the Board of Selectmen had that public debate. And the idea was that perhaps further investments in our stabilization fund, in our capital fund, along with meeting the needs, I think this community does, of the, of the community as a whole, weighed more heavily on that additional $100,000. In terms of our bond rating, Linfield, although that is a heavy weight for all communities in terms of OPEB on bond rating, our bond rating is incredibly strong and incredibly high. I would argue that we have a stronger, if not as strong, as any AAA bond rated community. And the path that we're on, and we could debate the additional money, is the right path as it pertains to OPEB. Standard and Poor's and Moody's wants to see a community serious about this, but not so serious that we're unable to meet our basic needs of the community, or to use one-time revenues for ongoing operating expenses, or not to invest in capital. It's a full picture of how they look at it. And those are my only concerns in my insights into OPEB.
Further discussion on the motion to amend the line item by adding $100,000? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor of the motion, when I open polling, press 1 for yes. Those opposed to the motion, press 2 for no. Polling is now open. Yes votes 81, no votes 244. The motion fails. Going back to line items 113 through 19, 119, is there any further discussion on those line items? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the article. Correct me if I'm wrong, down front, I think I have a total of $54,808,363. Is that correct? So the motion was to vote to raise an appropriate. As amended, $54,808,363. When I open polling, those in favor of that motion signify by pressing 1, and those opposed to that, press 2. Polling is now open. Well, yeah, polling is going to be open. Standby. Polling is now open. Polling is closed. Yes votes 257, no votes 50. The yes votes have it, the motion carries. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate. Mrs. Tremblay?
I just wanted to say that while the school department has no obligation to do this, they will reinstate the positions and listen to what was expressed tonight on Town Meeting Floor.
Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or appropriate by transfer from available funds or by borrowing, or from any or all such sources, sums of money for the purchase of various equipment and items in the nature of capital expenditure, and to give authority to credit the value of the various old equipment to be turned into or the purchase price of said items. Said sums of money to be expended in the direction of various town boards, committees, or offices, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Barrett?
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,793,731 for the purchase of various equipment and items in the nature of capital expenditures, as shown in the Finance Committee report on page 22 thereof, with the following changes. Add to the library budget $3,000 for book replacement. Add to the public works budget $37,000 for general repairs and flood remediation, bathroom and hallway floors, windows, sidewalks, and piping. And to give authority to credit the value of the various old equipment to be turned into or the purchase price of said new items, said sums of money to be expended in the direction of the several boards and committees of the town, and that to raise the appropriation of the sum of $1,742,731 be appropriated from free cash and $51,000 from cable peg access receipts.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,793,731 for the purchase of very equipment and, various equipment and items in the nature of capital expenditures, as shown in the Finance Committee report on page 22 thereof, with the following changes. Add to the library budget $3,000 for book replacement. Add to the public works budget $37,000 for general repairs and flooding remediation, bathroom and hallway floors, windows, sidewalks, and piping. And to give authority to credit the value of the various old equipment to be turned into or the purchase price of said new items, said sums of money to be expended in the direction of the several boards and committees of the town, and that to raise this appropriation to sum of $1,742,731 be appropriated from free cash and $51,000 from cable peg access receipts. Selectmen recommendation?
What does the selectman?
Recommends adoption.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 8.
Further discussion? Mr. Prospero?
Bob Prospero, 6 Cheering Cross. Does that mean that next year, we're not going, we took $1,707,000 out of our free cash, we have $300,000 left. So does that mean next year, we're not going to have enough money to buy capital items?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes. Next year, we will have a new allocation of free cash, we will have a capital budget, but my prediction is that it will be less than $1.7 million. But we will have enough money to have a healthy capital budget next year.
Just, just to help me, where's that going to come from? Because the paperwork I have says we're only going to have $300,000 and somewhat thousand dollars. Where are we going to get the rest?
At the end of the fiscal year, that $300,000 sale will be turned back into the town. When we create a budget, we have, we estimate revenues. Usually, as any company, we underestimate our revenues to be conservative, to ensure we can get a balanced budget. Local government is the only level of government that by law must have a balanced budget. If those revenues exceed those estimates, that's then returned to the town in the form of free cash. That free cash is the basis in which we fund our, our capital budget. Yes, plus, I should say, thank you, Bob, any unexpended money in any line item at the end of the year from all the departments was returned back into the general fund, which is then processed as free cash the following year.
Thank you. So do you think that our free cash next year will be less than the $2.3 million that we have this year?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on Article 8? Seeing none, we'll put it to the vote. I'm sorry, where? Yes, ma'am. Microphone down, please. Microphone down.
I'm Amita Sony, I'm at 1 Cheering Cross. I have a question about the electronic check-in and electronic voting at town hall numbers. How do they compare with what we spent in 2018?
We did not spend, my understanding is we did not spend any money in the previous fiscal year. This is the first year that these devices have been used.
So I have a real problem with spending $70,000 when we're talking about such low amounts of our free cash. I think as a town, we should look at more cost-effective ways to handle electronic voting at town meetings. I, I just think then, as a town, we don't have the money for certain jobs in the school department, which helps students all year round. For something which is nice to have versus must have, it's something we should reconsider.
Mr. Dolan?
If I may, the free cash is, should be used only for one-time, or one-time expenses. It should never be used for a police officer, a firefighter, a teacher, recurring expenses. So it should be kept in mind that any time we spend free cash, it should be used for a one-time item, which is all the items here.
Further discussion? Down front?
John Giasso, 24, Longbow Circle. Point of clarification, in the capital budget of the line item, business lease payment, why would that be in the capital budget and not in operating? Seems to be an operating expense.
If I may, I would ask our DPW director, who's in charge of the bussling program, to answer that question. Thank you.
John Tomaz, DPW Director. Last year, we purchased two brand-new buses for the schools. It was a five-year lease with an option to buy, so that's what these payments afford. This is the second of five payments to own those buses.
Any further discussion on Article 8? Yes, ma'am, down here. Down front. Way down, come right down, come right down. Right down the middle here.
Hi, Judy Burson and Harvey Park. I have two questions. The Pillings Pond algae treatment, can that be, can we get money through other towns and from the state for that? Because I know they did an algae treatment in L.A. Quanapawood, and they got help from different towns, and the state came in, and I believe the federal government came in too, because of how the rain runs towards Quanapawood. And I was just wondering, is Linfield eligible for anything like that, which would knock down that price considerably?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes, ma'am, I, I will look into that, and we were always trying to find other forms of revenue to, to, to solve problems, and I'll certainly look into that over the coming year. Thank you for your suggestion.
And my other question is about, you said to put aside $3,000 for book repair or replacement, but it's already listed. Is that an additional $3,000, so we're looking at a total of $6,000?
It's a total of $3,000 as a result of some damage in the library that caused the contamination of books.
Any further discussion on Article 8? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. When we open the polling, those in favor of Article 8, hit 1. Those that are opposed, hit 2. The polling is now open. Polling is closed. Yes votes 292, no votes 32. Article 8 carries. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or inappropriate by transfer from available funds, or some money for the town's stabilization fund, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $200,000 to the stabilization fund by voting to raise and appropriate $100,000 from the tax levy and by appropriating $100,000 from free cash.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appropriate the sum of $200,000 to the stabilization fund by voting to raise and appropriate $100,000 from the tax levy and by appropriating $100,000 from free cash. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend the adoption of Article 9.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee also recommends Article 9.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to a vote on Article 9. All those in favor of the motion, press 1. Those opposed, press 2. Polling is now open. No, it's not. We appear to have some problems with the electronic voting. While they're trying to fix this, why don't we take a voice vote on this article, which is perfectly acceptable, and see what happens? So all those in favor of the motion under Article 9, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Technology doesn't always work. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or inappropriate by transfer from available funds, or some money for the town's capital facilities fund, or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $100,000 to the capital facilities maintenance fund. Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $100,000 to the capital facilities maintenance fund. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board recommends adoption of Article 10.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 10.
Further discussion on Article 10? Seeing and hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Are we ready to do this electronically? We're good. So when I say the polling is open, vote, vote yes by pressing 1, vote no by pressing 2. Polling is now open. Polling is closed. Yes votes 296, no votes 19. The motion carries. Article 11. To see if, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adapting a new Chapter 10, as you have printed in front of you in the warrant. It's pretty lengthy. I'll waive the reading and entertain a motion.
Mr. Moderator? I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by adopting a new Chapter 10 as listed in the warrant. Second?
It's been moved and seconded.
I'd like an explanation on letter A under number 2. Fringe benefits of full-time employees whose salaries or wages are paid from the fund shall also be paid from the fund. Does that mean that some employees of the departments that we'll see in the next article, where we're going to signify what the amounts will be, does this mean that some people will be paid from the town budget and some from the revolving fund? I don't understand that statement, and I'd appreciate a clarification.
Mr. Mullen?
Tom Mullen, Town Council. Did you want it? I was just going to say that the statute we're operating under says that, to the extent that you pay any full-time employees out of these revolving funds, you have to pay the fringe benefits out of the same fund. So that's why it's in the bylaw.
We currently don't have any full-time employees paid out of any of our revolving funds that are entitled to benefits, so that's why they're not charged.
Would you please identify yourself? Identify yourself.
Julie McCarthy, Town Accountant.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Mrs. Campbell? Well, let's bring the microphone back, and you can raise your question again.
It's more than the fringe benefits that I'm asking about. I'm asking if which employees are going to be paid out of the revolving funds and which are going to be paid out of the town budget? Do we have any clue?
We pay part-time employees out of the recreation fund.
Thank you.
Further discussion on Article 11? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. When the polling is open, vote yes by pressing 1, vote no by pressing 2. The polling is now open. Polling is now closed. Yes votes 287, no votes 26. Article 11 passes. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to establish with respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amount that may be expended from each such fund in fiscal year 2019, as printed in your book. Mr. Dolan?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to establish with respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amount that may be expended from each such fund in fiscal year 2019, as printed in the booklet.
I'll second that. It's moved and seconded, the town vote to establish respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amount that may be expended from each such fund in fiscal year 2019, as printed in the book. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the adoption of Article 12.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 12.
Further discussion? Mrs. Campbell?
According to the previous article, the $250,000 for recreation includes field maintenance, and so does the public works, no, sorry, recreation and public works. Both include maintenance of fields. So who's maintaining what, please? And why do we need two different revolving funds addressing the maintenance of the fields and also the town budget as well, I would imagine?
Mr. Tomás?
There's essentially two funds that I use to manage the fields at the high school and the different playgrounds and the athletic fields around town. There's my own budget, which is in DPW. There's also funds I use in the athletic department. So those different youth groups contribute to the maintenance of the fields, which I don't see, except through their revolving fund. So altogether, there's about $225,000 that are used to maintain all the fields and other properties throughout the town.
Further discussion on this article? Up in the back? Michael, I can't see up there that well, so if somebody's up there, just give me a shout, will you?
Hi, Ann Miller, Fernway. I wanted to know where the income comes for these revolving funds? If the, if the, if income is generated from, from the department, would they be able to increase the amount that they spend?
Mr. Dolan?
One, none of these funds can run in a deficit. The first part of the question is, where does the money come from? It comes from various fees, athletic fees, border health might charge for flu shots, any sort of income generated by those departments. And obviously, they cannot run in a deficit. But they could raise as much money as they, as they can.
So if they raise more than what's, than what the cap is, where does that money go? Don't they get to keep it?
It would stay in the fund.
Further questions under, under Article 12? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Those in favor of the motion should push the 1 on their device. Those opposed should push 2. Polling is now open. Will be, is now. Polling is closed. Yes votes 291, no votes 25. The yes votes have it, the motion carries. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from emergency medical service enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to operate the emergency medical service in the town of Lynnfield. Said enterprise fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2019 and from persons, persons using said service or to take any other action in connection therewith. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2019 the sum of $758,857 from emergency medical service enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to fund emergency medical services operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year, fiscal year 2019 from persons using the service.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2019 the sum of $758,857 from emergency medical service enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to emergency medical services operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2019 from persons using the service. Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the adoption of Article 13.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 13.
Further discussion? Down front.
Steve Sorrentino, 3, Patrice Lane. Can someone shed some light on the source of funding and what this service is? I'm not sure that I fully understand it.
Chief Taker? Is there another microphone over for the chief?
So the, the emergency medical enterprise fund is funded through ambulance billing. So when someone calls for an ambulance and they transport it to the hospital, we bill them, bill their insurance company, and that money, in turn, funds our emergency medical operations.
Does that answer your question? No, go ahead, sir.
Hasn't that always been the case? I mean, what is the change? Is there a change to? No.
I believe that has to be re- reauthorized every, every year.
In the past, I think, just as a matter of an explanation, as the past, in the past, I think we've taken it up as part of the consent agenda. So it's been one of eight or 10 articles that we dealt with all at once. Because of Chapter 10 being accepted and different things, the consent agenda wasn't done at this meeting, it made it more expeditious to handle it this way. So it's been in the past, amount might have been a little different, but it's been, been here. Any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the motion should push 1, those opposed should push 2. Polling is now open. Yes votes 308, no votes 12. Yes votes have it, the motion carries. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from golf enterprise receipts and/or golf enterprise retained earnings to pay expenses and contractual services required to operate the Reed Meadow Golf Course and King Rail Golf Course. Said enterprise fund to be credited with all fees charged to receive during fiscal year 2019 from persons using the golf courses or what action we'll take therewith. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2019 the sum of $950,000 from golf course enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to fund golf course operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received and received during fiscal year 2019 from persons using the golf courses. Second?
It's been moved and seconded, the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2019 the sum of $950,000 from golf course enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to fund golf course operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received and received during fiscal year 2019 from persons using the golf courses.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Lacorze? Fine, have a seat, Mr. Lacorze. We'll entertain discussion in just a minute. Let me, let me, let me get the motion out first, then you can have your discussion, Mr. Lacorze. Be happy to entertain you. It's been moved and seconded, the town vote to appropriate during fiscal year 2019 the sum of $950,000 from golf course enterprise receipts to pay expenses and contractual services required to fund golf course operations. Said fund to be credited with all fees and charges received during fiscal year 2019 from persons using the golf course. Recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the adoption of Article 14.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 14.
Any further discussion? Mr. Lacorze? Ladies and gentlemen, town officials, Mr. Moderator, I feel like Tom Brady with a busted play. I spent the entire week working on the warrant, Harry Lacorze, 28, Patrice Lane, warrant article in the library, going to find at 6 o'clock tonight that we had an Article 14 sheet in the lobby. But we'll get through this, not as quickly as I hoped. Mr. Moderator, I have a copy of an amendment I will provide to you. It's written by a lawyer. It's more lucid than what a doctor usually writes. I move to amend the main motion to eliminate the appropriation for King Rail Golf Course on Article 14. I was hoping to speak for six minutes, but this may go a little slower because of the late information that was at the lobby tonight with respect to Article 14. But I think we can get through it. The amendment that I'm making is for the purpose of closing and shuttering down the King Rail Golf Course on June 30th, 2018, and allowing permitted passive recreational uses, such as a dog park and walking trail, effective July 1, 2018. I respectfully ask for a second. Thank you. Mr. Moderator? I have a copy of the motion. You have another motion? Well, this is the second, yes, because I have. Why don't we work on one motion at a time here, Mr. Lacorze? All right, sir. You may keep that, that's for, that's for you and him. So currently, Mr. Lacorze, we're working on a motion to eliminate the appropriation for King Rail Golf Course from the revolving account. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my fellow taxpayers, several years ago, the National Development Company donated a nine-hole golf course to the town of Lynnfield, which they claimed was worth $1 million as an incentive to build Market Street. Subsequently, part of this course was acquired by LIFE. That stands for the Lynnfield Initiative for the Elderly. This resulted in a long delay in opening the course, in which the first hole, which old times say was 440 yards over a pond, was shortened to 269 yards with no water hazard. And the ninth hole was shortened to what I would call a pigeon putt hole, 65 yards from the red tees, 90 yards from the whites, less land than the backyards of some of our McMansions. In its present form, the King Rail Golf Course has a number of other shortfalls. One, the entry road is a narrow, dirt and gravel dusty road, jammed in between life on one side and conservation land on the other, with a long walk to the first hole. Second, automobile parking is woefully inadequate at that course, with LIFE having to fence off its property to prevent illegal parking. Three, there is no practice putting or chipping green. Four, there is no food service. Five, the sanitary toilet facilities are extremely limited, one in the hut, one porta-potty. Six, there is no permanent clubhouse or equipment storage buildings that currently exist. This resulted in a long delay in opening the course, in which the first hole, which old time to say was 440 yards over a pond, was shortened to 269 yards with no water hazard. And the ninth hole was shortened to what I would call a pigeon put hole, 65 yards from the red tees, 90 yards from the whites, less land than the backyards of some of our McMansions. In its present form, the King Rail Golf Course has a number of other shortfalls. One, the entry road is a narrow dirt and gravel dusty road jammed in between LIFE on one side and conservation land on the other with a long walk to the first hole. Second, automobile parking is woefully inadequate at that course with LIFE having to fence off its property to prevent illegal parking. Three, there is no practice putting or chipping green. Four, there is no food service. Five, the sanitary toilet facilities are extremely limited, one in the hut, one porta potty. Six, there is no permanent clubhouse or equipment storage buildings that currently exist. In addition, the labor costs at King Rail are very excessive. And there needs to be a lot more managerial oversight with respect to how dollars are spent for labor in this town, particularly in the golf courses. Finally, the State Department of Revenue shows losses in the six figures for the golf enterprise funds for two of the last three years. We've spent billions on those two courses. I do not feel that our taxpayers should continue to subsidize an unprofitable golf course. There are more critical funding needs in our schools, the roads, and the parks. And our selectmen have publicly stated recently that we are coming into more diet budget times. Again, our agreement with National Development calls for the King Rail Golf Course to be used for passive recreation. I had contemplated three possible uses, the highest one being a dog park, secondly, a walking trail combined with that, and the third one will strike. Effective July 1, 2018, my motion is to shut down King Rail on June 30th, 18, and is of July 1, institute passive recreation for a dog park plus maybe a walking trail. Thank you very much for listening. Mr. Moderator, in closing, I request permission to speak again on this motion after other speakers have been recognized. And I will also want to say that if you move the question, I need to be recognized before that's accepted. I assume that's okay with you, sir?
It's not.
No?
No. So, you happy to go around the room and let other people speak, Mr. Lacorze? When everyone else has spoken once, I'll allow you to speak a second time unless somebody moves the question before that happens. If somebody moves the question, that's a procedural directive. As the moderator, I have no choice but to proceed to a vote on moving the question.
Thank you, Mr. Board.
If we get back to you, I'd be happy to have you speak any time as you'd like, as long as we're not trying to move to a vote.
Thank you. Thank you for listening, ma'am.
So, it's been moved and seconded to amend Article 14 by eliminating any appropriation for the King Rail Golf Course. Is there any discussion down front regarding this enterprise fund or how it works? And is there a dollar amount that we can attribute to this? Because I think effectively, that's what Mr. Lacorze is trying to do.
Yes. Due to the fact that both golf courses share staff, share equipment, combined, there's no, we can't extrapolate the amount of money, exact amount of money spent on that particular golf course. Secondly, an enterprise fund is almost like a business within a community, meaning that revenues and expenditures must remain within the enterprise or that business, meaning golf receipts can only stay in the golf course. They can't be used for any other purposes. So, those are like only two points at this time.
Further discussion on Article 14? Woman down front? Yes, ma'am?
Judy Burson, Harvey Park. And if we close down King Rail, how much business will we lose from the Sheridan when they bring their hotel guests to pay to play at that golf course? They have a way in. They can, we could even probably park in the Sheridan parking lot and be driven up by their little van and dropped off, so there would be no long walk. And for the food, maybe we have to get something built and look into it. I know, I believe it was Rainham a couple of years ago had to rebuild their golf club. And they associated the guy like $2 million to do it, and they ended up doing it for like half a million. All the golfers donated something. They got one guy who had several businesses. He got the food and liquor license. There's a bar in there, open all the time. There's a dance floor for functions. Regulated bartender all the time. Nobody gets drunk. Somebody donated the rug for the floors. I mean, everything was donated or gave at cost or low cost. I mean, it may not have been prime rug, but... What they paid was nothing.
Mr. Lyons?
Don Lyons, Director of Golf for the Town of Linfield. I've been here since 2005. In 2008, we were lucky enough to take over the old Colonial slash King Rail. In deference to a couple of Harry's remarks, I mean, we take in approximately $900,000 to $975,000, weather depending either fiscal or calendar year, no matter how you look at it. It may be a little bit different. Our first real fiscal year was '17 because the golf course did not reopen because of having to go out to bid a couple of times on the road. We went out to bid for six weeks, as some of the selectmen would know. We got no bid. We had to wait another six weeks, go through it again, so we lost a season. But back to the income, the actual income is higher at King Rail than it is at Reedy Meadow. And if anyone has been to Reedy Meadow, I mean, they're two specifically different golf courses, but they cater to two different clients. The people that like the old Colonial slash King Rail think our place in the center is too easy and vice versa. We do a lot of kids programs. We're the feeder for beginners. A lot of country club players probably live in Linfield. Most of those players are developed at small public courses some way along the line. I disagree. I mean, the parking lot is rough, obviously. I'm not going to lie about that. There is sufficient parking there as there is at Reedy. I mean, people kind of figure it out. There's never any issue. We've worked closely with the fire. We've worked with Dave Breen, the police chief, on any issues if they were to come up. Again, the services have got a little bit better this year because we have replaced the trailer. We've got a bathroom inside that is unisex. We don't have two different ones, but that will certainly help with our female customers. We definitely hold our own in the area. You know, could the amenities be a little bit better? Certainly. I'm not sure it would tremendously increase our revenue source. We're in a weather-based business. There's no way you can say yea or nay. I mean, I'm lucky enough to some degree, obviously, to work here, but also be privately involved in two golf courses. You wouldn't want to own a golf course this April, no deference to residents of Linfield or Donnie and his wife. I don't think it is as tragic as Harry's saying. It could be better. But again, I think that the customer base up there is good. We have verbal agreements. We don't have written agreements, but we have leagues that we've made promises to through the season and so forth. I got a league three years ago through friendships and relationships that came from Bill Flynn's Lakeview and Wenham. When they closed, we have 60 players every Saturday morning that play up there. Now, they're counting on it, and they just started this past Saturday. You know, what do I tell them? And again, I have to do what you want because obviously I'm an employee and I'm loyal and I appreciate my job. But, you know, I think the place holds its own. You know, if someday we need to get a better trailer, a portable building, whatever the case is, we could use better amenities, but I would hate to see it go away. And I think that, you know, we have a solid clientele base. Thank you for your time.
Is there further discussion on the motion to amend Article 14? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Thank you. Sanjay Aurora from 8 Jordan Road. I wonder if it'll be appropriate to have a secondary amendment to this?
Depends on what you're trying to amend. You're trying to amend the amendment?
Yes. Striking a middle ground in which a particular day, I mean, I've enjoyed both the courses, King Rail and also Reedy Meadows, and I think they add a lot to the town. I was wondering if there could be a middle ground in which a particular time of day or particular days of the week could be set aside for some of the suggested things, some of the suggested uses, which are also good uses. Thank you.
Now, I'm not sure I understand your motion and I don't think it's appropriate as to motion to amend this with that, so...
Would you suggest that I come back with a separate motion?
Is your motion to restrict use or to restrict?
Not to restrict use, to restrict a sometime, say Monday morning to four walking or dog walking or something of that sort. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's get through this motion first. If you want to make a motion to that effect after we finish discussion, I'd entertain you, sir, if you want to get back up. Yes, sir? Down front, please.
Steve Sorrentino, Miserville Lane. Do we know if the receipts from the golf course exceed the expenditures? Are we operating at a net deficit or a net profit?
Mr. Lyons? Ms. McCarthy?
Julie McCarthy, Town Accountant. I can report on FY '18 through March, the first three quarters. We currently in revenues have received $583,000. And our expenses are $537,000. So, right now, we are in a profit of about $47,000.
Mr. Dolan?
Yeah, I think there are some things also that we have done and what continue to do to push the revenue and expenditure side. One being, we did an evaluation of area public courses. The rates have not changed there in several years. We added a moderate dollar a year to, dollar around to the rate. We're hoping that brings in between $45,000 and $50,000. Secondly, we should be looking at staffing as it pertains to year-round employees and the need for seasonal help. I think there is enough that we're looking at right now, and I look forward to working with Mr. Lyons, to tighten up the business plan, to look at staffing, to look at area rates, and make that number a little bit larger in terms of the positive side. The intention, my understanding, was that the course was never going to cover the debt service that was when the town decided to purchase that golf course. But it as a whole, there are some things we can do from a big picture to improve things, but we are covering the most basic of indirect costs. If you look at indirect costs, you can look at other things if you want to add to it, but we also have to understand the potential of that course in real life and what it can provide, and then trying to identify that and then meeting, getting everything we can out of both revenue expenditures to make it the best experience. I think we have some work to do in that regard.
Mr. Santangelo?
Fred Santangelo, 5 Tollford Road. Question I have is, are there any plans in the works to increase or improve the amenities at that course, such as putting a road in there or maybe a small clubhouse, better facilities for the players as well as men and women who need to use facilities? What's in the game plan for that?
As you know, I'm relatively new. I do have some experience in public golf courses, particularly Mount Hood and Melrose, which is a profitable course, different than what we're talking about now. I hope to be looking at those amenities with Dawn. I think one thing that needs to be clear, and we could talk about this more, is that any investment that we make in that course should be covered by the receipts. That should be our goal. So, there's obviously a cap to that and taking how much we can within the budget dedicate to debt service and then working from there what we can improve, ranking what we have to improve, and maybe even bringing some people in to help us in that regard.
Up back. It's moved and seconded to proceed to a vote. So, the first thing we're going to do is vote on whether we should move forward on a vote to the motion to amend. So, you simply, this is procedural only? Do you want to end discussion and move to a vote on the question? So, if you want to end discussion, push 1 for yes. If you don't want to end discussion, push 2 for no. Polling is now open. Polling is closed. I need that vote count. Yes votes, 289. No votes, 28. We'll proceed to a vote on the motion to amend Article 14. All those in favor of amending the motion on Article 14, push 1 for yes. Those opposed, push 2 for no. Polling is now open. I'm sorry? One person? Not sure what we're voting for? If you're in favor of the motion to amend Article 14 as put in front of the body by Mr. Lacorze, you would vote yes. If you're opposed to the motion to amend, you vote no. The amendment is to eliminate funding or the appropriation for the King Rail Golf Course. So, if you want to keep King Rail open, you push no. I had to think about that, but thank you for all the help and I always appreciate it when the crowd laughs at me, okay? It's excellent. So, if you're in, want to keep King Rail open, you push no. If you want to close King Rail, you push yes. Clear? Polling is now open. Looks like we did not record the vote electronically. I'm going to go to a voice vote on this again. So, all of those in favor of the motion to amend the main motion to eliminate the King Rail appropriation signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We'll move on to the question. I'm sorry, the noes have it. Sorry. The noes have it. I'm with you here, okay? I'm working hard up here. Article 14 is to appropriate the sum of $950,000 for the golf enterprise receipts. Is there any further discussion on this article? Yes, ma'am?
Stephanie Rossio, 15 Russet Lane. I'm confused.
So am I.
Somebody's saying that the golf course is paying for itself. Are we adding another $950,000 to the revenues from it?
Mr. Dolan?
Or is it paying for itself?
That's right. We'll get an answer, Mr. Dolan.
No, that's not the case. But that's for operating two courses.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Rossio? No. I believe the answer is that the $950,000 enterprise receipts covers the operation of the golf courses, both courses. Am I correct, Mr. Lyons?
I think it's basically the same thing the chief asked for with the ambulance enterprise. It had been packaged the last few years in... It had been packaged the last few years in with a couple of other amendments or articles or whatever, and voted on all at one time, but it is our own money, in our own enterprise. We're just asking for it to be approved to pay our bills, but the town is not adding money to it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any further discussion on Article 14? Mr. Wills.
Charles Wills, 7 Smith Farm Trail. I read a letter to the editor last week in the paper that said that over the last 10 years, the town has lost $1.2 billion on golf. Is this true?
I'm going to ask Julie McCarthy to answer that. We've asked her to review that, those facts, and present them.
Okay, I looked at the article myself and reviewed the numbers. Doesn't quite give a total accurate picture of the Golf Enterprise. In the early years, 2007, '08, '09, what was missing is we had some other revenue sources from the sale of real estate in the general fund. They were premiums we received. We used those revenues to pay the debt service expenses out of the enterprise fund. So, the numbers that were reported, the expenses included the debt, but on the revenue side, it didn't include the revenue source, so it showed quite a large deficit. And in the later years, from FY '11 to FY '17, every year, we had capital costs. And the capital costs, when they were appropriated, they could be appropriated in one year, and you don't spend them until three years later. So, it's not a real apples-to-apples comparison, like we have in the operating. You have current capital, and you spend the capital. So, with all the capital costs lined up with the regular expenses, it shows, that's why some years show an expense, I mean, a loss instead of a profit. But I will say, since we started the Golf Enterprise in 2005, we have never had a negative retained earnings, only one year, and it was $35,000, and that was FY '15. And we turned around and funded it from the general fund of $70,000, and that's the only deficit we've ever had on the books.
So, the numbers that Mrs. Shea gave in the letter are incorrect?
They're incomplete.
Thank you.
Mrs. Shea, up in the back, please.
Katie Shea, Mrs. Shea, 7 Daventry Court. I wrote the article that talked about the expenses, profit, and loss on the Golf Enterprise, Linfield's Golf Enterprise account. The source of the information was, the numbers were received from the state's DOR website. That was from 2007 through 2016, and on FY '17, that number came from the annual town report of 2017. So, Julie, again, you're the town accountant. You have visibility to things that were not on the state website. Can you please explain to me why the certified numbers that were put on the state website are so different from what you have currently reporting? Because these are numbers that came from the state, and they were certified to be put up by the state. Thank you.
And, yes, Katie, I did verify all of your numbers, and you were correct. They did come from the Department of Revenue website, but there's also additional information that you need to look at to get a complete picture. There's other revenue sources that have to be brought into this picture, and then, when you're looking at the total expenses, you're including this debt service, but you're only comparing it to the operating revenues. So, it just doesn't match up, and I'll be happy to show my analysis to you.
Julie, thank you for your explanation, and I'll be down later this week to go over it, but I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sullivan.
Kevin Sullivan, Main Street. I'd also, I'd like to make two points. I believe you also have to take into account that for several years, the town had to maintain King Rail, even though it wasn't open and wasn't bringing in revenue. So, I think that's something we need to consider. King Rail, I believe, has only been open for one full year. I think it's way too early to make such a drastic decision. I think we need to leave it open for a couple of years and see how it works out, and then maybe we can reconsider potential other uses.
Further discussion on Article 14. Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Reminder, the motion is on the appropriation of the sum of $950,000 from the Golf Course Enterprise receipts. If you're in favor of that motion, you would hit 1. If you're opposed to that motion, you would hit 2. Polling is now open. Polling is closed. Yes votes, 277. No votes, 35. Article 14 carries. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate by transfer from available funds or from any and all such sources, a sum of money for the purpose of paying fees associated with work completed on the design of the clubhouse and maintenance building at King Rail Reserve Golf Course, and to take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Dalton.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to indefinitely postpone Article 15.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 15. Any discussion? All those in favor of indefinite postponement should push 1. Those opposed, no. Polling is now open. Polling is closed. Yes votes, 275. No votes, 30. Article 15 passes. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding as Section 3.4 the following, as printed in your book. Mr. Treville.
Good evening. I'm Brian Treville, 9 Willard Lane. I'm the chairman of the planning board. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding Section 3.4 and by adding a line numbered 27 to the Table of Uses, both as listed in the warrant with one change, that on proposed line 27 of the Table of Uses, it shall read, quote, "27 marijuana establishment that is not a registered marijuana dispensary," end quote, with the zones and letters N following thereafter.
Sorry. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding Section 3.4 and by adding a line numbered 27 to the Table of Uses, both as listed in the warrant with one change, that on proposed line 27 of the Table of Uses, it shall read, "27 marijuana establishment that is not a registered marijuana dispensary," with zones and letters N following. Recommendation to Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the adoption of Article 16.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 16.
Recommendation to Planning Board, Mr. Treville will allow you to speak on this argument.
The Planning Board recommends adoption of Article 16. Very briefly, members of town meeting, this and Article 17 will look very familiar to you because they were adopted by town meeting one year ago. It correlates with the state's allowance of recreational marijuana, and this is part of the bootstrapping approach, both action at town meeting last year and at the town election in April of 2017, to make sure that recreational marijuana was prohibited in town. Long story short, you may recall that at last October's town meeting, the zoning bylaws were recodified and modernized, and as part of that recodification effort, town meeting actions from last year were not captured in the recodification, so we're catching them now with Articles 16 and 17.
Further discussion on Article 16. Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Somebody wants to speak? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. If you're in favor of the motion, press 1. If you're opposed to the motion, press 2. Polling is now open. Now it's open. Yes votes, 253. No votes, 54. It's a two-thirds requirement, which would be 202, the article carries. On to Article 17. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding as Section 3.5... Mr. Kimball, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The motion contained the amendment.
The motion was, the motion included the amendment, Mr. Kimball, but thank you. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding as Section 3.5 the following, and I'll refer you to your books again. There's an extensive description in there. Mr. Treville.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding Section 3.5 as listed in the warrant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding Section 3.5 as printed in your booklet. Recommendation to the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the adoption of Article 17.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends Article 17.
Planning Board, I'll defer to you, Mr. Treville, for your recommendation and explanation.
The Planning Board recommends adoption of Article 17, and I would refer town meeting to what I said regarding Article 16.
Is there any further discussion in the audience? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Those in favor should press 1. Those opposed should press 2. Polling is now open. Polling is closed. Yes votes, 258. No votes, 247. 201 would have been required for a yes, so we have a yes vote. Article 17 passes by more than two-thirds. Moving on to Article 18. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as printed in your book. Mr. Treville.
I move that the town vote to refer Article 18 to the Planning Board for further study.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the town refer Article 18 to the Planning Board for further study. Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend the article be referred to the Planning Board for further study.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also recommends the Planning Board for further study.
Mr. Treville?
The Planning Board recommends adoption, or rather, on Article 18, that it be referred to the Planning Board for further study. And by way of brief update, as part of the modernization of the zoning bylaws and the map, we've been working with CAI, the Board's consultants, on a modernized map that, most importantly, will dovetail with the town's GIS system. The town staff especially have been spending incredible time working with the consultants on making sure that the modernized map is exactly right and shows existing conditions, and that work simply isn't complete yet, so we look forward to being back before town meeting in October with the modernized map.
Any further discussion on Article 18? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement should press 1. Those opposed? Thank you. All those in favor of referring the Article 18 to the Planning Board for further study, press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. Polling is open. Yes votes, 285. No votes, 27. Article 18 is referred to the Planning Board for further study. Article 19, to amend the zoning district map of the town of Linfield entitled "Zoning District Map of the Town of Linfield," dated December 1953, as amended date by changing from Single Resident District, D-R-D, to Elderly Housing District, E-H. The parcel of land off Main Street, Linfield, containing 105.680 acres, as shown on a plan entitled "Plan of Land in Linfield Mass," drawn by Hays Engineering Scale, 1 inch equals 40 feet, dated December 21, 2017, showing existing area of Single Residence D District to be rezoned to housing for the elderly district, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk and bound and described as follows. I'll waive the reading of the description. As you can see, there's a lot of geographical points that I'm sure you'd like me to go through the whole list, but I won't. I will defer to Mr. Rignanti.
Mr. Moderator, Ted Rignanti, 15 Pocahontas Way in Linfield. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the zoning district map as set forth in Article 19 of the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded to amend zoning district map of the town of Linfield.
Mr. Moderator?
Hang on, Mr. Rignanti. As set forth in Article 19 of the warrant. Is there a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen recommend the adoption of Article 19.
The Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends Article 19.
The Planning Board? Planning Board recommends as well. Thank you. Mr. Rignanti.
Mr. Moderator, I have two administrative motions. I would respectfully request that we be permitted to discuss Articles 19, 20, 21, and 22 in tandem, since they all relate to our proposed rezoning, and if you determine the vote is necessary, I so move.
Is there anyone that has any objection to them discussing the four articles all at once, that there's only one explanation of this package? Hearing none, I'll allow you to proceed with all of them at the same time, Mr. Rignanti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that with respect to Articles 19, 20, 21, and 22, our team be granted 25 minutes for our presentation rather than the usual 10 minutes.
All right, well, we'll put this to a vote. Is there a second to his motion? It's been moved and seconded that with respect to Articles 19, 20, 21, and 22, the team be granted 25 minutes for the presentation rather than the usual 10 minutes. Is there a... Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, so if you'd like to allow them the 25 minutes for the presentation, press 1 for yes. If you want to not allow them, press 2 for no. Polling is now open.
Yes 61, no 253. We'll keep the presentation as short as we can. Bonvy Homes and the Luff family propose to develop the easterly side of the Sagamore Spring Golf Course, 105 acres, with 154 units of over 55 housing. This project will preserve all 18 holes of the existing golf course. There are four articles that we have presented for your consideration. Article 19 would rezone the easterly side of the Sagamore Spring Golf Course from Residential RD to Elderly Housing EH. Passage of this article will preserve the course in its present current configuration. All existing holes would remain essentially unchanged, while the 55 and over townhouses would be carefully nestled around the perimeter of the fairways. Article 20 would allow a golf course to be part of an elderly housing district. Passage of this article will allow the Luff and Strobel families to continue to independently own and operate the golf club, since they have done since 1929. Article 21 would change the number of units permitted in an elderly housing district from 136 to 154. Article 22 would align the town's zoning bylaw to be consistent with the state's groundwater protection regulations. The proposed regulation would permit a residential wastewater treatment facility in a groundwater protection district by discretionary special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. A treatment facility such as we have proposed would require stringent oversight by the state. We have presented these articles to various commissions and bodies in the town. The units will be laid out along the front nine holes of the golf course. The 100, all 154 units will be two-story, two-bedroom duplexes, triplexes, and quads. The square footage will be between 2,400 and 3,000 square feet. All will have a first-floor master bedroom. Each multifamily building will be styled to look like a large, single-family home. As far as the financial impact is concerned, the expected annual gross revenue for the project will exceed 1.8 million. Municipal costs will be very low, so that the net revenue will exceed 1.7 million. The project will generate $700,000 in building permit fees. In addition, the town has proposed, and the developer has agreed, to a mitigation package worth about $1.7 million. $1,540,000 will be paid over the first 77 units' closings, and an additional $154,000 will be paid in upfront site improvements, including substantial improvements to the Main Street-Lol Street intersection, and other mitigation measures as well. Any leftover money will be paid to the town. There'll be low impact on town services. The development will be a private gated community, which is expected to reduce the need for police services. No children under the age of 18 will permanently reside in the development, consistent with state and federal law, and will be enforced by binding deed restrictions. The developer, Ron Bonvy, has been building and developing residential communities in Massachusetts for 48 years, and he's recognized nationally as an expert in this field. I would now like to turn it over to Peter O'Gran to discuss the engineering, traffic, and other issues.
Well, our presentation is going to be a little shorter than I thought it would be. I would just like to hit the high points. There's been a number of questions about the site, and I think probably one of the most was what the alternatives are, so I'd like to switch to the slide we have that shows the potential for a single-family house. We had been asked to study this site for single-family houses some time ago by the owners of the golf course, and in 2006, we created a residential plan, and we've done a comparison of what we proposed to that residential plan. The residential plan could consist of 82 single-family housing units. We've analyzed the impacts of that as compared to the elder housing projections, and I can just tell you that the traffic generation, sewage generation, all of the impacts that would be normally felt by a community are much less with the elder housing proposal. The other question that's come up is we've requested under Article 22 to amend the groundwater protection district, and I'd like to go to that slide if we could, please. The groundwater protection district in Linfield was adopted back in, I think, the mid-1990s, and when it was done, it was authored such that it was not consistent with the state sample bylaw at the time, in that it did not allow for any groundwater discharge permits. The groundwater discharge permits that we're asking for will do the following things. It will only affect multifamily development over 10,000 gallons a day, and it will have absolutely no effect on existing or proposed single-family Title V septic systems. It will allow for the construction of a state-permitted and controlled state-of-the-art treatment plant, which is the groundwater discharge permit. When the bylaw was adopted here in Linfield, it didn't anticipate a discharge permit that would be associated with something like an elder housing zone. We've reviewed the information with the DEP Regional Director, Ken Burnham of Linfield Center Water District, the district's consulting engineers, and all concur with our interpretation and analysis of the land use comparison. I won't bother to read the land use comparison, but you can see below, it's less sewage flow and a greater treatment. The other question that has come up is that of water supply. We're aware of the situation as far as Linfield Center Water District is concerned, and I can tell you that we have received a commitment from the MWRA to wholesale water to this project. The MWRA simply need, it has ample capacity to supply water to the site, and we're investigating options as to how that water can be delivered to the site. The last thing I would like to mention is, as far as traffic generation, I've already indicated that the traffic generation would be less as far as the elder housing. It's 480 vehicle trips a day for elder housing units with the ITE, as compared with the 82 single-family houses is 865. We did do a detailed traffic study, I won't bother to go through all the points on the slides, but we did do a speed study on Upper Main Street. We found what the average speeds were, and we've determined that the site distances at the proposed entrances are adequate for the 85th percentile of the speed. There were no reported accidents in the accident reports for the place where our proposed intersection is. Lowell and Main Street accidents, which was the other intersection we studied, were below the MHD averages and involved only property damage. There was no physical injury to accidents at the corner of Lowell and Main Street. The project does not change the level of service on Lowell and Main Street intersection, but we still have offered a mitigation, and I can just show you briefly what that is. This is a conceptual of the, the current intersection has long crosswalks, it has stop signs that are stop lines that are quite far from the intersection and don't allow for site distances. We have a proposal that will be on the right-hand side of the screen, which puts the proper safety islands in it, and gives free right-turn lanes, and is totally contained within the existing roadway layout. Thank you.
Your time is up, gentlemen, so, Mr. Rignante, if you want to spend 30 seconds just summarizing this, I'd be happy to let you do that, but I think the meeting has spoken unless the meeting wants to move.
I think we'd prefer to answer questions that come from the floor.
Great. So let's proceed to any questions on this article? Over in the front row over here? Yes, ma'am? You?
On Lowell Street in Linfield. I wanted to know, why did you have to add the 18 extra units?
I think the reason we want to go to the 156 units is that there are economies of scale, and we can't offer everything we've offered for the proposed development and develop it with the number of units that were allowed under the zoning. That's why we've asked to go to the extra 18 units.
Also, I wanted to know a timeframe of how long the project will take with all the construction going on in the neighborhood?
It's never possible to predict how long a development will take, because unfortunately, we're in an industry that's cyclical, and we have boons and busts, and we don't know exactly when they'll come or how long they'll be, but it's unlikely that the project could be completed inside of, I would say, probably six years, and it probably will take longer than that to complete the entire 156 units.
And one more question, sorry. Where will the water treatment or retention basin be? Do you know?
If we could go to the proposed development plan there, the, it's not a water retention thing, it's actually a sewage treatment plant, and the location of it would be in the, what you would see is the southeast corner of the project there. That's a flat area, it's an area where we know there's adequate soils in order to support such a facility as far as the infiltration is concerned. The plant itself is housed in a small garage-type structure.
Mr. O'Gran, can you orient us on this picture? What is north, south, east, west?
Yeah, north is up the, up the sheet, and my associate is just showing you the area with the laser pointer there where that would be.
What's right, what's right behind it? What property? Is it mine?
Yeah, I don't think it necessarily goes all the way to your property line, but it's the area that adjoins your property, yes.
Further discussion? Yes, sir. Right there, right at the base of the stairs, right?
Eric Aron, Main Street. When was the last traffic study done?
The traffic study that we conducted was done this spring, and that's the traffic study that I'm referring to.
I just cares when it was, because I'm assuming the golf course was not open when you did that.
That's correct. The golf course wasn't open, and there are also seasonal adjustments that you make to a traffic study, but both those were made. We included the fact that the golf course was open, the ITE trips that would be to an 18-hole golf course, and we also included the seasonal adjustments for the fact that we did it this spring.
Further discussion? Over there? Yes, ma'am? Don't be timid, step right up.
Donna Cashman, 1067 Main Street. I have a couple of issues. Linfield, at one point, did a traffic, a whole traffic study, reconfiguration of the four corners. It was, there were horrendous accidents there, and they came in and they did the four-way stop, they narrowed the roads, and it's been wonderful. The accidents have decreased incredibly, as you mentioned, Peter, and the speed has slowed way down, and it's really been very safe. I have no idea why we'd have to reconfigure it and speed it up again. The second thing I have are the housing numbers. We went to the Planning Board meeting, and Ted Rignante's group quoted, again, the 2010 numbers, the housing numbers. This is eight years later. With a development like this, where does this put us with the 40B? We went to the Selectmen, we got four different answers from the Selectmen, three of which were very concerning, the totals. And then the one that was the 10.18% was the only one over, and that one included the apartments that were condominiums, and then they were going to come through, and Ted Rignante, apparently, it came through the Selectmen that he was going to have those permitted, and they would help with our numbers. How is this development going to impact that?
That's a very good question, Donna. Right now, the town is over 10%. In fact, the official inventory is 11.5%, so that we do not have to worry about any additional 40Bs. There is a project at 2 Broadway in Linfield, which is now, they're doing site work. Once a building permit is issued for that project, which will probably be within 60 days, the town will get credit on its inventory for 64 affordable units, because that is a rental project, and you get credit for all of the rental units. That means that Linfield will have 640 units of protected housing in the future. So even when the new census comes out in 2020, we are well protected from any 40B in Linfield.
Let me answer your first question. A second, as far as why do we need some improvements? We offered the improvements on the intersection of Lowell and Main, not because there were accidents that were reported, but because the delay times, particularly in the northbound evening trips, were a level F. And if we make the corrections or the improvements that we've suggested, it will bring it up to the level D. Now, that may not sound too great, but there were, there are long delays there in that northbound in the evening peak hour, and it would alleviate that. It wasn't a matter of safety so much as a matter of convenience and increasing the level of service.
Any further discussion on these articles? Okay, go ahead.
My name is Ken Peterson, I live on Upper Main Street. I've lived there for 35 years. Main Street is a broad, high elevation, it's the highest point in town on Upper Main, beyond where this plan is laid out. It's unique among the towns of Peabody and Middleton that in the town water and fire protection of Linfield only, we have no fire protection, we have no water supply. We have individual wells beyond We have individual wells beyond Sagamore Springs Golf Course going up the hill. Furthermore, that road beyond where these gentlemen and their engineers, I respect them and lawyers, are speaking of, that road is the most dangerous, one of the most dangerous in the state. Now, anybody here who's driven it knows it's got a hill that goes over the top with a ridge that you can't see beyond. It also has double curvature. Double curvature in the engineering notation means the road turns like a fork. It's a windy road with a big hump. If an oil tanker truck, and this is a busy roadway, we know that, I'm beyond Lowell Street and Main Street, we're up on the hill where the action gets really interesting. If an oil tanker truck were to be in an accident, and they've happened, they've happened on the downgrade, they've hit trees, if an oil tanker truck were to overturn, we would lose our individual wells. All people beyond Sagamore Springs Golf Course going up over the ridge have individual wells. That's how we get our water. We have no fire hydrants, we have no fire protection beyond tanker trucks. If that accident were to occur, we would lose our wells, the town of Linfield would lose its well field due to oil contamination, and the Ipswich River would be flooded. That's the water supply for the town of Peabody. It would be flooded with this hazardous oil, which would flow right down Main Street and into the river. I'm concerned about safety and traffic. On Upper Main Street, people drive by my house on the downgrade into Middleton at sixty to seventy miles an hour. The police department, in all respect to the chief, cannot make a pinch up there because it's only a narrow two-lane road. There's Friendship Lane and Catherine Lane, Catherine Drive, which come out. It's a high-traffic, dangerous area. How does the town of Linfield handle it? All the homes up there are required to be on two-acre individual lots. The traffic from the golf course in the summer and the drivers who drive very fast are a major problem. I ask the town to consider our fate. There are only now about twenty houses beyond this development going up and over the hill. Traffic goes both ways. It goes through Lowell Street and Main Street very safely, as Attorney Rignanti and his engineer point out. It's when you get beyond Sagamore Springs that people drive very fast. We've had accidents up here, major accidents. Trucks have collided, barriers have been knocked down. We're waiting for the big one. We maintain a file among us neighbors, and there are only twenty of us who live beyond Sagamore Springs, that if the town goes forward with something like this and we suffer, we intend to sue with our file. We ask your consideration, people. Help us, this is a dangerous situation. It's only made but more dangerous by what's proposed. Thank you for your attention.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Campbell?
First of all, it'd be no comfort to everybody to know that our charter says that zoning's supposed to be done, addressed in October. Our founding fathers were very smart, weren't they, when they put that down? So, I wish the petitioners had been more sensitive to your time and mine and had properly addressed it in the fall meeting. Second of all, there have been, I have been to about four meetings at least, four or five or six. As you know, I do my homework. Too many false premises have been presented, and then what they've been telling us has been changed. One is on the traffic. They first did their study in January, so I asked for another study, as did some other neighbors. They're telling us that no one at that project's really going to go out during the heaviest traffic times of the day, and yet, there's going to be people that could live there that are just eighteen years old in one day. They may be still going to high school. Also, the premise was stated that people that are fifty-five and older aren't going out at the early times of day. Well, all the seniors that I know, that are generations, several decades older than that, we all go out at the busy times of day. So, that's just a small example of some of the false premises that have been presented. And I have one question, and I have several questions. One is, the town has the right to the first refusal to purchase the golf course, and yet, I've heard nothing about that with all the meetings that I've gone to. Has the town looked into purchasing it? If so, how much would it be? Come in, please.
Tom Mullin, Town Council. I certainly can't speak to amounts, I can tell you the process. The property in question is a golf course, it's recreational land, and it has benefited for years from being classified under Chapter sixty-one B as recreational land. That means it's taxed at a lower rate. Part of the deal you enter into with the town when you get into Chapter sixty-one B is that if you ever change the use, one, you have to pay rollback taxes to the town to make up for some period of years previous when you've been taking advantage of the lower taxes, and two, you have to give the town an opportunity, a right of first refusal, to purchase the land. And the purchase is either done at the price that an offerer is willing to pay in a purchase and sale agreement, or if it's just a change of use as opposed to a sale, you do an appraisal and you have to pay the appraised price. Again, I can't speak to any values, but that's the process.
Are there any other comments on that?
Town officials? Anything from the town officials? Mr. Dalton?
I would just say that with respect to the statement that perhaps the town was looking into purchasing the golf course, that is not correct. The town has expressed no interest in purchasing the property.
I think that was your point. Wasn't that your point, Mrs. Campbell, that the town has expressed no interest?
Would you say that? Repeat that, please.
Wasn't your point that the town has expressed no interest in purchasing the golf course?
Not that I'm aware of, having gone to many, many meetings about the issue.
I think the question, Mr. Dalton, was why the town has not expressed any interest in purchasing this golf course.
The reason I ask that question is because when surveys have been done in Linfield regarding the master plan at two different points in history, people have come back and said that they would, number one, want to purchase the golf course, and number two, to have single-family housing on it. So, that's the, because people have repeatedly expressed that interest over two master plans, I thought I should ask that question.
Tom Mullin, again, Town Council. The issue of the sixty-one B right of first refusal brings up an agreement that the selectmen have executed with the owner and the proposed developer. Okay, can you hear me now? The question of sixty-one B brings up the issue of an agreement that the Board of Selectmen have entered into with the owner and the proposed developer. Specifically, the selectmen have agreed that if, when they are asked to consider the change in use, they choose to waive their right of first refusal, then the payments that Mr. Rignanti outlined will be made by the developer, coming to almost one-point-six million dollars, and the developer's promises will be secured by a letter of credit. And we've taken precautions also to ensure that we don't get any changes in plans. The owner would agree, has agreed, that if all of these rezoning articles pass, the owners will not change the use of the land or sell to anybody other than the developer unless they get the express written agreement of the Board of Selectmen. So, we feel that this is a, the selectmen feel that this is a way to control, to manage the development of the land and to get all the mitigation that is needed to deal with the infrastructure impacts.
Mrs. Campbell?
Mitigation. I looked it up. I thought it was a curious word. To make less harsh or hostile, to make less severe or painful. I am most grateful that our selectmen did arrange for a mitigation to it all, but it's a very interesting choice of terms. My next question revolves around all those numbers that you see, south forty-two degrees, forty-eight, a distance of one-hundred-and-eighty-three-point-fourteen feet, thus turning and running, and on and on and on. Is there somebody that can verify that this is in our best interest? Because I certainly don't understand it.
Could I respond to that? Sure. Mr. Rignanti? The description follows a plan that was prepared by Hays Engineering, and it consists of the entire one-hundred-and-five acres on the easterly side of Main Street. So, what that description does is follows it by meets and bounds. So, it's, as I said earlier, it's all of the property, the front nine holes, that will be subject to this bylaw, where the one-hundred-and-fifty-four units will be placed along the fairways of the golf course. But in specific answer to Pat's query, it's based upon a surveyed plan by Hays.
I think that basically, there's so many unanswered questions with this whole thing. Where is the water coming from? How is it going to affect the Linfield Central Water District? How is it going to affect traffic, not just at Lowell and Main, but at Summer and Main? At the middle school, at the intersection of one-twenty-eight? How is it all going to affect us? We don't have all those answers. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Mr. Priestley?
I'd like to ask the representative for the developer, what are the potential, to remind us, what are the potential impacts to the school district and financial impacts to the town if the traditional housing is developed in lieu of the over-fifty-five housing?
I'm going to have Mark Fugier, who is our financial analyst, respond to that.
Good evening, Mark Fugier, for the record. We looked at two different scenarios, a fifty-two-watt subdivision and an eighty-two-watt subdivision, which involves both sides of the street. During this whole process, I met with the fire department, the police department, Public Works Department, and the school department to go over this different scenario. Looking at the cost of police, fire, the two miles of road, one and a half to two miles of new road that the town would have to take over with the development of a single-family home, miscellaneous expenses, school costs to cover the seventy-one to one-hundred-and-twelve children that we would expect from this development would cost the community anywhere between three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a year and six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars a year. Because this area is, would be very expensive homes, one-point-two-million-dollar homes, you still would see a profit of between a half a million and eight-hundred-thousand dollars a year. But obviously, the biggest concern right now in the community is school-aged children with the growing enrollment, especially at the elementary school. It's my understanding that the kindergarten class this year was one of the highest in recent years, which has a significant concern with the school board and school staff. So, obviously, the impacts associated with a single-family home development over time are going to be significantly more year after year than a age-restricted development.
Gentleman in the audience, right there, that's her, blue shirt. Stand up, they'll bring a mic, could you just stand up? Yep.
I just have a few concerns. My name's David Kulakowski, I'm at seventeen Monroe. No, I'm not on Main Street or anything, okay? I'm on the other end of town. But my biggest concern is traffic. Now, everyone does these studies with over-fifty-five. I know when I was fifty-five, we had two breadwinners in the house that left every morning, I had two children going to college. There were four cars leaving and coming and going, you know? Simply because children are over eighteen doesn't mean you're not going to have any over-eighteen-year-olds living there. Of course, there will be. You know, even if you took three cars for those one-hundred-and-fifty-four units, you're talking four-hundred-and-twenty-six cars. Half of those people are probably going to work. I don't know about a lot of you, but if you're over fifty-five, I was working when I was fifty-five, you know? Into my sixties. I'm not working full-time now, but certainly, the other breadwinner is. The mythology here is a little bit upsetting, that, oh, you're not going to have that much traffic. I can predict you're probably going to have a traffic light at Lowell and Main, you're going to have a traffic light at Summer and Main Street downtown, you're going to have to put a traffic light at Main Street by the middle school for the kids, and you're going to have a tremendous amount of traffic going down. The only way to get to any MBTA is to go down Main Street. There's no MBTA in Peabody, okay? There's no MBTA in Linfield. If you're commuting into Boston, or you're going there, or you're headed to one-twenty-eight, all those people are going to go down Main Street, and with all these Uber apps and things they have around, people are going to start going down Summer Street and cutting through to Walnut Street. You're only going to exacerbate that traffic problem. You know, I said this about Market Street when it came up. I said, "Watch out, you're going to get three lights on Walnut." "Oh, no, no, we're not going to need them, and look at the mesh you've got there now." And it gets worse. The second thing is, you're being, you know, the negatives are being put up. This whole thing of seventy-one to one-hundred-and-twelve children, you know, my neighborhood where I grew up, and I had two children who went to the Linfield schools, we had seven kids in our neighborhood out of fifteen houses, and you can extrapolate that out, that's not a lot. People do not have large, large families anymore. You know, I would predict if you did the eighty-two unit, you'd probably have forty kids, if best. People do not have large families anymore. The whole thing about, the other thing is, is confusing, it keeps getting confused here. First, we said, "Oh, it'll be fifty-two," now it says, "Oh, we'll have eighty-two." It's like a threat being held over the people. "Oh, we'll build eighty-two houses, and this will be terrible for the school system, it will be terrible." It wouldn't be. If you built in a million-dollar house, they're going to more than pay for that, for those school costs. I think your traffic mitigation is totally off the rails. You know, we saw what happened on Route One when all the development was allowed there and the zoning wasn't done. You know, zoning should be done for the benefit of the town. How do we benefit? We're going to get a gated community. I'm not going to get another street to walk down or to take a bike down. This is going to be closed to Linfield residents unless you live there. It's a gated community for very high incomers. You know, there are two units still at Windsor Estates right in back of the senior center. It's not like we really need one-hundred-and-fifty-four units of, quote, elderly housing. You know, I spoke up against when the elderly housing was lowered to fifty-five for this basic reason. You know, very few people can retire at fifty-five, if any. You know, everyone ought to consider, what kind of town do you want? What do you want your town to look at? This is nothing but clustered, heavy development, and the developer freely just said, "The reason I added eighteen more units, I make more money." They weren't satisfied with the one-hundred-and-thirty-four, they wanted eighteen more units. And again, I feel very badly for the people along Main Street and along Lowell Street, and the people that are in Gray Lane and everyone, because they're going to cut through there. I know when I'm up that way, I sometimes cut through Gray Lane and go down and cut through Wildwood to go to South Linfield. through Wildwood to go to South Linfield. You know, people are, it isn't just going to affect Main Street, it's going to affect a lot of the town. And people should, you know, this whole traffic thing of, oh, it's only going to be 18 more trips, or 22 more, or 40 more, it's crazy. So I just urge you, you know, the town isn't getting anything but a million-six payment, which is true what mitigation is. But you're going to have traffic lights, you're going to have a lot of traffic, and you're going to have dense, dense development. You know, we're a town. We don't need this. We do not need this. We don't have a shortage of housing. We have plenty of places for people. You know, we don't need it. Thank you very much.
Any, any further discussion on this article? Gentleman up to the center, yep. No, it's down here, right in the middle, in the opening.
Thank you. My name is Barry Sinowitz, and I live at 62 Catherine Drive in Peabody. I'm the city council that's represented West Peabody for the last 10 years.
Mr. Sinowitz, you're not allowed, I don't know how you get into the meeting, but you're not allowed in this meeting. It's not a public hearing. You're not allowed to speak.
Okay.
Somebody should have stopped you at the door.
Oh, that's disappointing. We do have some concerns. Can I just talk about the water?
No, you cannot. No, you cannot. Sorry.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
We've moved and seconded to proceed to a vote on the question.
I, Holly Champa, 2 Friendship Lane, I'm like right across from where all this is going to happen.
Mr. Champa, I'm sorry, but the question's been moved here by something that I recognized. I haven't recognized you to speak.
Okay.
So we need to proceed to a vote and move in the question. If they decide not to, and come back.
Oh, to vote whether he can speak? Because I have questions for them about this development.
I'm sorry. Somebody has moved the question to proceed to a vote on this. So we're going to move the question first. If it doesn't pass, we'll come back to more discussion, and you then, I didn't offer you the opportunity to speak. But right now, I need to move to the motion on moving the question.
I, I don't understand.
All right.
So we can't talk about this anymore?
Procedurally, when somebody moves the question, that's, somebody else was recognized, I didn't recognize you to speak, somebody else was recognized, they moved the question, it was seconded. As the moderator, I'm required to move forward on moving the question, which is just to see if the, if the meeting wants to proceed to a vote on this article, okay? If they decide not to proceed to a vote and go back to more discussion, I'll come back to you, I'll give you an opportunity to speak. Mr. Breen?
Sir, gentleman from Peabody, still in the room, is that voting allowed to, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, here, but the, but... So the point of order is that the gentleman from Peabody is not a resident of Linfield and therefore not allowed in the meeting. And I'll move to that point of order first, is to see if the voters want to allow him to remain in the meeting, or if the voters want to ask him to leave. So, I'm going to go to a voice vote, very quickly. All those in favor of allowing the gentleman to stay signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it, gentleman can stay in the room. Not allowed to speak still, so. The, let's proceed to a, the motion to move the question. So if you're in favor of ending debate and moving on to a vote on Article 19, you should push the one button. If you're opposed to ending debate and want to continue the debate, you should push two. Polling is now open. I'm sorry, you're voting, if, if you want to move forward and end debate and vote on the question, the article, then push one for yes. If you're opposed to ending debate, you want to continue to discuss this, push two. 193 yes votes, 120 no votes. We'll proceed to a vote on Article 19. Sorry for the delay. We're going to proceed to a vote on Article 19. This article is to, this motion was to amend the zoning district map of the town of Linfield entitled Zoning District Map of the Town of Linfield by changing from a single residence district to an elderly housing district, the parcel of land off of Main Street, which is known as Sagamore, basically. So all those in favor of changing this to an elderly housing district should vote one for yes. Those that are opposed to making this change should vote two for no. This zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. The vote is 171 yes, 136 no. The motion fails. Article 20, to amend the recodeified Linfield zoning bylaws to allow as a matter of right a private commercial golf course in an elderly housing district by amending Appendix A, the Table of Use Regulations, Principal uses D Retail, Trade, Restaurant, Paragraph 20 in the column under Elderly Housing, Fifth Residential Entry from N to Y, so it's to read as follows, I'll waive the reading. And before I allow a motion to this article...
Mr. Rignanti, I'll allow you to speak. Mr. Moderator, in view of the fact that the change in zoning has been defeated, it would be moot to, to vote on this article. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that the, that this article be referred to the planning board for further study.
You'll have a chance to vote, that's fine. Is there a second to that motion? Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay, the motion is to refer Article 20 to the planning board for further study. All those in favor of the motion signify by pushing one, those opposed, push two. The town meeting vote to indefinitely postpone, I'm sorry, to refer to the planning board for further study is 163 yes, 115 no. It's a simple majority vote. The motion on Article 20 carries. Article 21, to amend Section 11.5 definitions in individual meetings in the recodified Linfield zoning bylaw so that the housing for the elderly definition provides for a maximum of 154 units in an elderly housing district. The fourth sentence in the paragraph, "Housing for the elderly shall read, 'No housing for the elderly development shall contain more than 154 independent dwelling units.'" Mr. Rignanti?
Mr. Moderator, I make the same motion, that this article be referred to the planning board for further study.
Sir, second? It's been moved and seconded, that Article 21 be referred to the planning board for further study. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, push one, those opposed to the motion, push two. Polling is closed. Yes votes 173, no votes 99. The motion carries. Article 21 is referred to the planning board for further study. Article 22 is, I'm sorry, Article 23, to see if the town will vote to amend the existing zoning map of the town Linfield, together with all duly adopted amendments and revisions there too, as filed in the office of the town clerk, as printed in the warrant. Mr... Wait, I want to make a... Did I miss 20? I'm sorry. I missed 22, I'm sorry. To amend the recodeified Linfield zoning bylaw to allow a residential sewerage treatment facility subject to 314 CMR-5 in a groundwater protection district by special permit, provided that such facility meets the performance standards set forth in Section 9.3.7.5 of the bylaw, by adding a subsection D to Section 9.3.7.11 of the bylaw and subsection three to Section 9.38.8 of the bylaw, providing as follows, and I'll refer you to the books as printed. Mr. Rignanti?
Mr. Moderator, I make the same motion, that Article 22 be referred to the planning board for further study.
It's been moved and seconded to refer Article 22 to the planning board for further study. Is there any further discussion on this article? Mr. Priestley?
I'm not sure if this is the right time or in order. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Article 19 in the prevailing side, in hopes it would, it would fail.
Let's, let's, let's get Article 22 under our belts, and then I'll recognize you to make that motion. You're not out of order there. So, the motion is to refer to the planning board for further study, Article 22. Is there any further discussion on Article 22? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. If you're in favor of referring Article 22 to the planning board for further study, push one. If you're opposed, push two. Yes votes 168, no votes 96. The Article 22 is referred to the planning board for further study. Mr. Priestley?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Article 19, in hopes it would fail.
Is there a second to the motion?
No.
Is there a second to the motion? It's been moved and seconded to reconsider Article 19. I'll entertain discussion. This motion is simply to go back to Article 19 and engage in more discussion, and then bring it to a vote again. Mr. Prosperity?
Bob Prosperity, Six Charing Cross. I think this is the, this project is absolutely incredibly good for the town of Linfield. I don't understand why it got turned down. Other people have their own opinions, but I, I, I think we should reconsider it, I think we should vote for it, because it's the best project we had, and I'd like the people of the town to know what we did years ago when Herb Chambers wanted to put a parking lot in, and look what we ended up getting.
The gentleman over there, right next to Mrs. Valles?
My name is Donald Swim. I live at 1219 Main Street. We just moved here. And I have studied this for the last month since I've been here. I've met Peter, I've met the owner, Mr. Luff. Mr. Luff is one of the finest people I ever met. I've known Peter for the last 40 years in different various projects. This is a great project for the town. You know, I back right up to the golf course, I don't want to see, and I don't think you people want to see, 85 houses going in there. You really don't. You've got a, a project that's going to protect your school system, it's just going to do so much for you. Thank you for your time.
I'll recognize the lady up in the...
Stephanie Rossi, 15 Rossett Lane. I just have two concerns about this project. I back up tra, on traffic right now going up Main Street, and I live in Apple Hill. Main Street and Lowell Street is already congested. If we get another 154 units, that's 300 cars, two cars a unit. If they only go out once and come back once a day, that's 600 more cars at Lowell and Main Street. I don't know where they're going to put them. You can't widen the street, you can't widen it. That's, and that 600 is a small amount. And now, the other problem that I have with this is the schools. Where are these people coming from that are going to move into these units? They're coming from Linfield, big houses, that right now don't have a lot of kids. I live in a house alone in Apple Hill. If I move to that project, someone's going to buy my house with two or three kids in it. So these units, although they don't have houses, the people that are moving into them are going to sell their Linfield houses to people that do have kids. You're going to enlarge your school system, no matter how you look at it. Those are my two concerns. two concerns.
I'll recognize the lady up in the back, who wanted to discuss this earlier before we move the question. I'm sorry, I didn't come back to you.
Hi, Holly Champa, Two Friendship Lane. I live very close to where this is going to happen. I live right at the top of the hill, because I abut Main Street, and there is an enormous amount of traffic, and the cars are not going thirty-five miles an hour, because I almost get into accidents several times. I have heard nothing about traffic relief at my street. And also, where is the water going to come from? Because we all share wells, we all have private wells, but it all comes from the same underground source. I heard a very jumbled thing about a possible water tank's getting delivered. Where's the water coming from? I think that really needs to be laid out as to where it's coming from for all these people. And also, aren't there going to be employees at this place? Because they will also add to the traffic. If there's going to be like a restaurant and a clubhouse and everything else.
Can we respond to that, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, first of all, there is no restaurant in the proposal. As far as the water was concerned, I think I was pretty concise, but I talked fairly fast. We have a verbal agreement with the MWRA to provide water, and we need to find a way to get it to the site. We can do that from actually a number of neighboring communities, and we're looking at those possibilities. We're studying it now. So there's definitely a way to get water. MWRA has plenty of water to do it. It's just a question of how we transmit it to the site.
I haven't recognized you yet, so we'll move it when we're ready. Mr. Sullivan?
Kevin Sullivan. I also live on Main Street, and I have had the same concern about traffic, but I've considered it carefully, and I feel like this is the best alternative for the town, so I encourage you to vote in favor.
What's your point of order? You know, you're absolutely right. Let's move on to reconsideration. Are there any other discussion on whether or not we should reconsider this subject? On reconsideration, please. Any other discussion on reconsideration? If not, Mrs. Campbell?
I respect what the town has, the town meeting has already voted on. I hope we vote out reconsideration. I always thought this was a very sneaky trick. What they voted, the people will leave. What they're hoping...
Is that people leave, and that what we've already debated and what's already been decided upon is going to be changed. So let's respect what town meeting has already voted on.
All right, let's proceed to a vote on reconsideration. So if you're in favor of reopening debate and having a further discussion on Article nineteen, you should push one for yes. If This is a simple majority vote. Yes votes are one-twenty-two, no votes are one-forty-eight. The motion to reconsider fails. We'll move on to the final article on the warrant, Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to amend the existing zoning map of the town of Linfield as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Kimball?
I move that the town vote to refer Article twenty-three to the planning board for further study.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to refer Article twenty-three to the planning board for further study. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Hang on one second. Let's go to a voice vote on Article twenty-three. All those in favor of referring it to the planning board for further study signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article twenty-three carries. Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Moderator, I move that this meeting be adjourned, sign aye.
I moved in second to adjourn, sign aye, die. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Please drop off your clickers on the way out the door. It will not control your television at home.